Five one, this meeting is officially open with a quorum present. We will now move to our pledges which will be led by Mr. Clint Bund. Move on to item number three. At this time, we will hear public comment. Let me remind you that because of the restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry, or direct a person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should refrain from mentioning names of individual employees or public officers during their comments. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. No presentation for tonight's meeting may exceed one and a half minutes per policy B E D local to allow everyone the opportunity to speak unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time as speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. For those who are speaking tonight, sanitation wipes are available at each podium. All in-person speakers will be called first and then all written statements will be read. I ask that you please observe these rules for the purpose of effectively accomplishing the business of the meeting in a timely manner. Our first speaker for tonight is going to be Amanda Coleman. Amanda is going to be followed by Missy Kara.
Dear trustees, my name is Amanda Coleman. I'm a mom of three who has been in Fort Worth ISD schools for six years. However, we switched to a charter school this year because I lost faith in your ability to make decisions that are in the best interest of our students. I would like to voice my concern over our superintendent's recent letter to Austin. I'm concerned that he's using his influence to fight for critical race theory being taught in our classroom. Contrary to what he states, CRT is an ideology based on Marxism. It pits groups of people against each other and focuses on our differences rather than what we have in common. It shuts down conversations rather than opens them up. In that letter, our superintendent says these bills would cripple the quality of civics education. Currently, our schools aren't even in the top 50 best schools in Texas, and we're paying him how much? Right now, our students can barely read, write, and do math. What if we focused on the basics and character education instead of CRT? Teaching kids about truth, goodness, and beauty, virtues like respect, integrity, responsibility, and hard work? I agree we need to help our kids learn to come together. I personally believe these sensitive issues are best addressed at home, but the board seems insistent on diversity and inclusion training. I reached out to the board on April 22nd offering an alternative to the divisive CRT focus by offering a superior solution to our problem called Unity Training Solutions. I would love to use UTS implemented, I'd love to see UTS implemented in our trainings, and I'm happy to help make this happen. Thank you.
Next, we have Missy Kara. Missy will be followed by Suzanne Asfar.
Hi, I'm Missy Kara, and I'm the Texas Director of Parents Rights and Education. Critical race theory is racist, said Dr. Alvita King, niece of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. last Saturday. We agree. We acknowledge that the experiences of racism are real, but reject CRT as the solution to this issue. By contrast, you created the Division of Equity and Excellence in 2016, adopted CRT-based programs Courageous Conversations in 17, and added multiple associated programs and initiatives. You've invested over $1.3 million, completed hours of staff racial equity training, held equity committee meetings, and brought the ideology of CRT into the classroom. Dr. Schreiber, you yourself said that an introduction to CRT is an important feature here which will help achieve academic goals and create anti-racist classrooms. Your results, however, show that our students in district continue to struggle. Before COVID, data shows that from 2015 to 2020, the rate of children transferring out of Fort Worth ISD increased 89%. Only 32% of third graders can read at grade level. Only 20,000 students remain stuck in schools that earned a D or F. Five years of CRT has not significantly improved student achievement, and we want what is best for all students and are here to help hold you accountable. We want to work with you, and please tell us how.
Thank you. Just a reminder, please do not use individual employees' names or public officers. Next, we have Suzanne. Suzanne will be followed by Stephen Poole.
So I wholeheartedly disagree with the superintendent's action with his letter regarding the letter to Austin. Unfortunately, there are many people who simply don't know what critical race theory or CRT is or why it matters. They simply hear the words diversity and inclusion and buy in. Critical race theory is a worldview that sees everything through the lens of race. CRT says racism is present in every aspect of life, every relationship, every interaction. As they say, the question is not did racism take place, but how did it manifest in that situation? It rejects all potential alternatives like colorblindness as forms of racism. It says if you are not anti-racist, you are racist regardless of your intentions, and you will never be finished confronting racism. CRT requires discrimination in order to achieve equity. Critical race theory does not continue the legacy of the civil rights movement and MLK as many incorrectly believe. It is against liberalism and the liberal order upon which Western societies are founded, and it rejects both equality and neutral principles of constitutional law. It also rejects legal reasoning and enlightenment rationalism. It is anti-American by definition. Be aware, critical race theory has redefined the word racism, and it is a root ideology that is fostered terms we hear everywhere now such as equity, social justice, microaggression, systemic racism. We should desire diversity and inclusion, but as outcomes to a truly impartial system, not prerequisites to it. CRT is being employed in our district with plans to expand its use. I am, for one, not sending my child to school to become an activist or anti-anything for that matter. I do not want her to be taught what to think, but rather how to think.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephen Poole. Stephen will be followed by Eric Richardson.
Mr. Ramos, members of the board, and Dr. Schreiber, thank you for the time tonight. This afternoon, I emailed all of you extended remarks, but I wanted to share a thought before the budget presentation here in just a little bit. Fort Worth ISD and this district has always found itself among the most competitive markets in the state when hiring and keeping highest-quality teachers and staff. All of the North Texas school districts combined will have approximately $1.8 billion in federal funds to spend over the next three years, which will amp up the competitiveness. The 2% raise penciled into the budget presentation so far will not be enough to compete us, to make us competitive as a school district. We're going to have to do more to attract the highest-quality teachers and staff, and more importantly, retain the highest-quality teachers and staff we currently have. And again, I'm always available if you ever need anything. I included my cellphone in that email if you need to discuss this issue or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Eric Richardson. Eric Richardson will be followed by Kathleen Powderly.
How you guys doing? I just want to say, you know, I'm coming here in objection to the CRT program because, you know, as a successful black man, business owner, entrepreneur, and consider myself active in the community as well, I look to the great civil rights leader, Dr. Martin Luther King, who said that, you know, men, he looked forward to a day when men would be judged by the content of their heart, you know, and their character, and not by the color of their skin. And so in the CRT training and teaching, it actually reverses us from where Dr. King was bringing us to civil rights. And furthermore, when I see in our school systems, you know, we are, Mr. Superintendent Schreiber, we are at a C rating here in Fort Worth. And so when you start bringing in these other things and ideologies instead of just teaching our kids how to get their grades to where they need to be and to be successful in this life, we're doing a disservice to our community. And we want, we here in Fort Worth just want to let you know, we do not accept it, we do not want it in our city, and we want to move forward, and we want to move forward with heaven's justice concerning our city and concerning our kids. And that's what this country was founded upon. We need to bring God back into our schools. We need to stand for the flag. We need to, that's the answer. That is the answer. That's what makes our nation great, and we'll continue to make Fort Worth what it is.
Next, we have Kathleen Powderly, and we will go to Laura Castillo after Kathleen.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kathleen Powderly, and my son is a junior at Pascal High School. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the thousands of children enrolled in the visual performing arts. The year of COVID has certainly taught us that the lack of engagement of children leads to increased absenteeism, increased failure rate, and an escalating mental health crisis. Time and again, studies have shown that students who engage in the visual performing arts not only do better in school, but perform better with standardized testing and learn valuable social-emotional skills. With this in mind, it seems intuitive that you should work to expand these types of programs. I would ask that each of you do two things in regards to the visual performing arts going forward. First, do not decrease staffing or in programs at any schools this year. Please look at the long game and do not be short-sighted given this anomalous year. Secondly, visit your older campuses and tour the choir and orchestra rooms, band halls, practice rooms, stages, and auditoriums. See the broken chairs, peeling paint, falling ceilings, exposed wiring, torn curtains, outdated light and sound system. Teachers and students don't need new buildings, but need clean, updated spaces. The ghost light is out, and the actors have returned. In celebration of the resiliency of the kids and directors of the Visual Performing Arts, the Pascal High School Theater Department, we'd like to present each trustee and superintendent with two complimentary tickets to our in-person musical Theory of Relativity, June 2nd and 4th, a musical celebrating the connectivity of us all.
Next, we have Laura Castillo. Laura will be followed by Cedric Canynda.
As educators, administrators, and anybody involved in shaping our education system, we can all agree that a strong foundation is essential to promote a successful academic achievement for our students. We say that parental involvement is just as important as any other factor. We are constantly reevaluating ways that we can increase and strengthen parental involvement. Therefore, the removal of programs, parents as teachers, will go against everything that we say is essential. Having firsthand experience in this program has shifted my perspective in so many ways. It has impacted not only my profession, but how I am as a mom. It's taught me things I never would have thought to teach my child at a young age. But if that man given him more than I ever had, then that's what I will do. Removal of this program, removal of this program is depriving parents and families of many resources, resources that I feel we all need. I feel like we will be setting them up for failure, and that's what we're going to continue doing if we remove this program. Now, my question is, is that what we all want?
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Next, we have Cedric. Cedric will be followed by Kristi Beck. Cedric not here. We'll move on to Kristi Beck. Kristi will be followed by Marshall Hobbs.
Hi, my name is Kristi Beck, and I'm a concerned Fort Worth citizen, a certified teacher in the state of Texas, and I formerly had students in Fort Worth ISD. I am here to ask the school board to reject critical race theory in all its forms, including the 1619 Project, and get back to the basics in educating our children. Whether it be in the trainings for teachers or in the curriculum, critical race theory has no place in the classroom. If our goal is to improve student achievement, then our focus has to be on the children. I was so disheartened to hear that superintendent not only supports critical race theory and programs like Courageous Conversations, but also wrote the Texas legislator to advocate against two bills that would ban critical race theory from the classroom. Do you find it concerning that our ISD is using and promoting materials that could possibly be banned statewide? By writing this letter, you have in essence said that Fort Worth ISD supports and wants to continue to use CRT in the classroom. To use any material that is as controversial, unproven, and divisive as CRT is is misguided and irresponsible. It tells me and the families of Fort Worth ISD that the focus is no longer on meeting the academic needs of children, it's on promoting an ideology. How can we come alongside one another in this collaborative, transparent, joint effort to improve student achievement together without CRT?
Thank you. Next, we have Marshall Hobbs. Marshall will be followed by Stephen Chaco.
Concerned citizen, the previous board member's judgment is questionable in my respectful opinion. As a black American educator, whom raised two sons as a single father, are now college graduates with no criminal record, I ask myself where they would be today if they were educated in Fort Worth ISD. I must admit, my sons were educated in a suburban school, ensuring they attained a better education than in Fort Worth ISD where I resided. We entrust you to educate our children, but all data shows they are failing, falling behind under this administration, and most parents doesn't have the choice as I with my sons being educated. Adding insult, his first policy is to let boys into girls bathrooms, giving boys a chance to be impulsive. I ask, what boy wouldn't love to go into a girls bathroom? We citizens recommend terminating superintendent's contract. He's out of step with our values in education. We want common sense theory, not his liberal critical race theory in education. If his theory holds up, then Mr. Schreiber needs to come down from his ivory tower, kneel before me, renounce his white privilege, and give me his $400,000 position because he is not qualified. Black lives matter.
Next, we have Stephen Chaco. Stephen Chaco. I don't think Stephen has joined us tonight. Next, we have Carlos Tursios. Carlos will be followed by Elizabeth Sinkey.
Good evening, board and superintendent. My name is Carlos Tursios, and I'm here to talk about data from the four ISD. Instead of having problem-solving plans that are equitable, the ISD has decided to focus on ideological French ideas that will not help close the achievement gap for our students. There's a bismol that the ISD has a C rating while Houston and Dallas ISDs both have a B. Only 30% of English II students passed the end-of-course exam in 2019. Only 36% passed the state Algebra I end-of-course exam in 2019. Across all four ISD elementary schools, only 32% of our third graders are reading at grade level. And according to TDA data, it was reported 22% of our black students, 33% of our Hispanic students, and 58% of our white students were at or above their grade level when it came to the academic reading test. And even slightly elevated dropout rates, the ISD has 4.4% of African-Americans that drop out, while the state average is 3%, and Hispanics is 2.6%, while the state is 2.3%. Ladies and gentlemen, this was before COVID, and we all know how far behind our students are now. Instead of having a good comprehensive plan to help our students, we're instead teaching them critical race theory and all of these ideas that, first of all, are not going to help them get a good job, get the skills to have, to be successful in their careers. And I'll just say this, as Senator Tim Scott said, America is not a racist country. If it was, I wouldn't be here, and either would half of the board would be here. America does not have a perfect history. America does not have a perfect...
Thank you, Carlos. Next, we have Elizabeth Sinkey. Elizabeth will be followed by Katie Coleman.
I was devastated to learn that the Parents as Teachers program as it is will be discontinued this next year. Parents as teachers helped us to build our village as our family. I had postpartum anxiety with my oldest son and was terrified to take him anywhere. Joining the class with my son helped calm my fears and connect me with other moms. Our indescribably wonderful teacher connected us immediately and helped us to fill it home in her classroom. I became more comfortable as a mother because I was encouraged in my parenting and received indispensable information. My husband could tell the difference in me after attending classes, and our overall family life improved. My son learned how to sit at, participate, and rotate in stations. He became very, he became comfortable in a classroom setting and learned how to follow directions. We learned about eating and sleeping patterns, routines, developmental stages, discipline, dental vision and hearing health, poison control, fire safety, bath and water safety, family budgeting, potty training, fairy tales and reading, the alphabet, days of the week, months of the year, basic sign language, colors, numbers, and writing. The children also had time to play, pretend, and act out stories. We practiced motor skills like gluing, using scissors, tracing, pinching tweezers. Every activity was intentional and well-thought-out. Parents were given support on employment and education opportunities, physical, mental, and emotional health, and overall offered a listening ear. At the last board meeting, it talked about high-quality engagement and family well-being, and I don't know how that will happen with the fewer resources and engagement that will be this next year.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie Coleman. Katie will be followed by Rachel Ponce.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here because when I watched the board meeting last month, I noticed that the presentation regarding Parents as Teachers greatly misrepresented what is done in the program. It indicated that we get just a monthly porch visit, that there is very little contact and guidance from our parent educator. The reality of the program, and my kids have been in this program for over five years, we meet weekly. When my oldest started pre-K and he started kindergarten, he was ready because of those weekly meetings. We also do monthly home visits where we talk about, as Ms. Sinkey said, routines and what is in the best interest of our children and all of the things that they need to grow up to be well-rounded students and adults. The program also screens for developmental delays and health issues, and as anyone in education or in that field can tell you, early identification and treatment is critical to making the most progress for those students. Studies have even shown, in fact, a study done just two years ago by Fort Worth ISD showed that students who are part of the Parents as Teachers do significantly better on their third-grade STAR tests than those who weren't part of the program. So I'm asking you guys, why are you going to cancel a program that helps everybody in the district?
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Ponce. Rachel will be followed by Robert Bucker, I believe.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Rachel Ponce Mercado, madre de tres adolescentes y un pequeño de 18 meses.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Rachel Ponce, and I am a parent of three kids in this Parents as Teachers program.
Como madre preocupada e interesada en el desarrollo de educación de mis hijos, tomo este momento para ser expresiva de mi agradecimiento y satisfacción que me da el poder formar parte del programa padres como maestros.
Like a parent, I'm very worried and interested in the child development and education of my kids. At this moment, I would like to go express my gratitude and satisfaction that this program has left me with my family.
Es bien sabido que para ser padres no hay manual ni instructivo con el cual podamos criar, educar, y guiar a nuestros hijos.
It's been known that as a parent, there is no manual, there's no instructions, and we need to take care of our students. And that's a way for us to guard our children.
Pero afortunadamente, contamos con la suerte de tener a nuestro alcance programas como este donde...
Fortunately, we can go ahead and count on these programs that can help us, teach us on our child's development.
Como este donde podemos formar niños felices, sanos, independientes, responsables, creativos, y capaces de crear, imaginar, y lograr sus sueños.
Then we can go ahead and start helping our kids become happy children, healthy, independent, responsible, and creative, and able to create and imaginative, and go ahead and achieve their dreams.
Sé que como yo, hay muchos padres que en su momento fueron primeritos, padres que llegaron a este país con la ilusión de dar a sus hijos un futuro mejor, pero sin la menor idea de cómo hacerlo.
As me, I can go ahead as a parent, there's moments where they are, I'm the first teacher, like me that had come to this country for my first time. One of my illusions to help out the kids was to make, give them a better future and give them the better idea on how to become better citizens.
Yo soy una de esos padres que buscó, indagó, y se encontró con que sí, si había quien podía ayudarme a lograr que mis hijos estuvieran en un futuro exitoso y prometedor.
I know that as a parent, I looked for this kind of program, and I found it. And that way, it has helped me help my children on the child development.
Ayudarme con cosas tan sencillas que para mí significaban mucho, tal y como saber si mi hijo va teniendo un desarrollo adecuado, crearle un ambiente seguro y divertido para aprender, y referirme como un especialista de la salud si es que era necesario.
These programs have helped me, helped me move on my child and their future to become successful, and also teach them that they needed some kind of... you about.
Es amor, es apego, es crear una conexión con nuestros hijos.
It's the love, it's the child attachment and the connection that I have made with the Parents as Teachers program.
El día de mañana, al mirar muchas cosas de las que vivieron.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robert. Robert will be followed by Allison Pollock.
Hi, my name is Robert Buker, and I have my associate's applied science and counseling and substance abuse. And one thing I can say is when you introduce CRT, it's not inclusive to everybody, it's only inclusive to one demographic. And I'm all for learning about other cultures, don't get me wrong, but when you just include one demographic, and as a Hispanic myself, it doesn't fly with me. I'm not included, nobody asked me, hey, what is your thoughts and feelings on, on how to get into this program? That doesn't work. And as a correctional officer of 10 years, I have not seen one demographic just all week long come through my jail. Not one time have I ever seen this demographic or that demographic. We get all demographics come through my jail at all times. So if anybody could speak on CRT, I know I can, because what I see every day, I don't see one particular demographic, yet to see it. And when I do, then I will come back and apologize. Until then, it doesn't happen, it doesn't work like that. Everybody that I've seen come through my jail has been billionaires, all the way down to the lowest poverty levels, too. And I've been in poverty myself. I come from a broken home. I have the same sad sob story, but I choose to rise above it as we all should. I'm not saying everybody has the same, same avenues that I may have, and that's unfortunate. And yes, we need to bridge the gaps there, I understand that, I get that. And yes, there is some things that we need to address to fix, but it doesn't start with just one demographic, it starts with all grabbing each other's hands. When do we do that? Why don't we grab everybody and say, how can we make this better for everybody? Is it because somebody has a certain type of hair that they, they can't help because, you know, it's just their demographics? Or is it because of the way I look, or, you know, my obesity, or what is it? How about we start including everybody? If we don't change everybody together, how we, how do we do this? It's not through one thing. So CRT is very divisive. You know, when they come through my jail, you know what? I probably get called more racist things from one demographic than I do others. And sometimes I get both ways and both sides. Sometimes my own demographic call me certain things. So how, how's that going to help when it's teaching divisiveness as they come in? And they're sitting there calling the cops, oh, just because I'm this demographic or that demographic, that's why you arrested me. No, maybe it's because you might have just been on camera and got caught with the same clothes you're on as you come through the jail. Take responsibility and make it better.
Next, we have Allison. Allison will be followed by Tracy Jenkins.
Good evening. Slight changes subject. I'm here to tell you thank you for all that you've done to help protect my children and the community through this COVID. I think we should be proud of how far we've come and that we're celebrating all the progress that we're making towards normalcy. With just four weeks left to go in the school year, I'd like to ask that you consider our littlest elementary kids. The mask rule leaves two weeks of school that masks are not able to be required, and the littlest of our students are not able to be vaccinated. So what I'm asking for, I know that that decision isn't really in your hands, but I'm asking you to make very clear guidance that allows parents who feel that they need to, to bring their kids back home for those last two weeks for asynchronous education. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Tracy. Tracy will be followed by Blanca Martinez.
Hi, my name is Tracy Jenkins. Bad ideas produce bad results. We need to add the bad idea of critical race theory to the next school board agenda so that it can be openly discussed rather than implemented without parental agreement or understanding of its destructive ends. The superintendent is a clear proponent of CRT. He wants microaggressions, implicit bias, and anti-racism to be taught in school. I posit that these ideas are themselves racist at their very core, and I would like a future opportunity to have them publicly and clearly defined. Many historical proofs remind us how indoctrination into twisted ideologies in the name of some greater good has produced chaos and destruction. The racism of Nazism was taught to children under the guise of fighting evil. The Soviets indoctrinated children to turn in their parents to be executed for opposing the regime. Nazis, Soviet communists, and critical race theorists share common Marxist roots. They all create a supposed group of victimizers and victims, pitting one against the other based on lies. I'm not here to attack the superintendent. Personal kindness and bad ideas one advocates should not be confused. I'm battling an ideology that he promotes that does nothing to further academic achievement but furthers division and hatred. Please stand up and help our kids get a proper education and stop the endeavor to indoctrinate rather than educate. Please allow us to prove our case against CRT and add it to the next agenda. Thank you.
Next, we have Blanca Martinez. Blanca will be followed by Jessica Cheek. Blanca will be followed by Jessica Cheek.
Yes, my name is Blanca Martinez. I'm a grandma, a mama, and a social worker, and worked for kids, advocating for children all of my life. And I am definitely against this critical race theory. It's a bunch of BS. Children do not know colors, they don't see colors, they know each other, and why are we making them identify colors? But more importantly are these vaccines, that they are busing our children to take these vaccines, because if they all die, and if something happens to them, they're not going to have no curriculum at all. These vaccines have not been tested. In fact, all of the animals, they tested them on, died, but we have the nerve of sending them to our children to get them? They trust us. We're the adults, we're the teachers, we're the parents, and we're sending them to their death, maybe, just like she mentioned with the Nazis. And back then, it was in trains that they took them to their death. Today, it's in buses that they're taking them to get shots that we know nothing about, except that all of the animals died in all of the trials. I say, stop the mess, stop the nonsense, stop. Think about what you're doing. Think about the children. We're here for the children. You chose this profession because you should love children. It shouldn't be about the money. Therefore, give your lives for these children and stop the nonsense.
Thank you, Ms. Blanca. Next, we have Jessica. Jessica will be followed by Tiffany Crockett.
Hi, I'm Jessica Cheek. Like all of you, I'm concerned for our Fort Worth community, its students, and the health of our community. This past summer, with all of the civil unrest and conversations about racial injustice, my desire was and continues to have healing conversations that bring truth to all sides. CRT has been a part of the Fort Worth ISD curriculum for over five years now. I personally know students who have suffered bullying because of it. Its teaching has not brought the stated goal of unity and inclusion. I am here today to state that you have our attention. We are aware of the ideology and the agenda it promotes. CRT is divisive and has not brought healing to our health, healing or health to our community. Citizens like myself and others are committed to engaging with you, to bring health and wholeness for our good, for the good of Fort Worth students, and we want unity, not more division. Thank you.
Next, we have Tiffany Crockett. Tiffany will be followed by Armandina Gura.
Good evening. I may be a little off subject tonight. I received a phone call from the school today telling me that my child couldn't graduate because she didn't pass this standardized test, which is, it's a one of the tests, which she's taken three times. The school did allow her to take double classes. She's pretty much done two years of work in one year, and something has to be done about this standardized test that's going on. I mean, if the teachers don't understand how to teach it, and it, there's just so much, we had COVID going on, everything is online, you have this going on, you have that going on, what, is there something that can be done about this standardized test? Can it, some type of exemption? I mean, she's done two years of work. She worked double and worked a job, and now she's told that she cannot graduate next month. That's unacceptable. Something has to be done about this issue.
Ms. Tiffany, we'll ask you to visit with Mr. Jerry Moore, right, right behind you. Thank you. Next, we have Armandina, will be followed by Zolkiis Carmen.
So what I want to say is, you know, the Republicans and Rhinos, what we need to be doing, if we take a look at ourselves here in this room and here on the board, we're of all different races, different ages, different sexes. You know, it's about time that we start celebrating what we've accomplished to come this far in all demographics, okay? Instead, we're perpetuating a shiny object of racism theory to our young kids. Just like everybody else who's been speaking before me, it needs to stop. Politics in the classroom, the teachers, it needs to stop. Our teachers need to be focusing on building their minds and giving these kids confidence, building their confidence and character. But you all are playing politics. I don't know what kind of backdoor deals are going on, but you're playing with our children's futures, their lives. Think about where you were when you were middle school and high school. You got to enjoy yourselves. We, most of us here in this room were able to live, go to our homecomings, go to our proms with no interference. But here we have on the frontal, right now, the shiny object, right now, critical racism theory. You're perpetuating, you're carrying the water of globe, of a globalist agenda. You need to take politics out of the schoolrooms like yesterday. You have no business. Why is any local school carrying the water of one world government?
Time, thank you. Next, we have Zolkiis Carmen. Then we'll have Jaleen Turner. Well, okay, thank you for that. Janet Diaz, I believe. And Janet will be followed by, I believe it's Andrea Mao.
Hi, I'm a middle school teacher with approximately 120 students, and an intervention specialist must be present full-time at Applied Learning Academy's new campus tour with all students adjusting to the global circumstances resulting from this pandemic, on top of navigating the day-to-day life of being a middle school student. Teachers have voiced that mental health resources are a must during this pandemic and its aftermath. Currently, ALA and a handful of other schools share intervention specialists. The best way to provide immediate health, immediate mental health support for our students is by providing a dedicated intervention specialist five days a week who will listen to them and help them in times of crisis. Last night during the Esther Funtstown Hall, there was an emphasis on instruction, but I can't teach when a student breaks down crying. Students cannot learn when there is an immediate crisis or concern. With an intervention specialist, I can call someone who will be able to help them through the process, to help them to process what they're going through. Our students both need and deserve to have professional support on staff to talk to, about their familial situations or whatever crisis they're going through. I'm not trained to take in all the trauma that students want to share, provide them with immediate help, while also shaping other students' learning. For teachers' mental health, too, I cannot bear the responsibility of a full-time interventionist. Last year, during my first year teaching, I felt so defeated when we didn't have an intervention specialist during a time that I had several students crying for help, crying for somebody to notice them and help them. One of those students ended up leaving our school. I don't know what happened to this child, but I do know that somebody on that day should have been there to not just calm her, but to plan coping strategies. And I have an iPad y'all can read.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrea. Andrea will be followed by Ale Cheka. Personal choice, and the mics are on.
Just so y'all know, we want to hear what you're saying. If you take it all, just keep it to the mic. We want to hear you.
This will just take a moment, we're just producing some signatures.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Mao, my husband, my son. We're all part of Parents as Teachers, and we have a list here for, from Fort Worth residents and parents. We gathered over 548 signatures here, and just wondering if my son could give it to someone so that you guys could have that? I don't know. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Ale Cheka.
Hi, good evening. I'm a little gobsmacked by what's going on tonight. My colleague and I came to speak on something totally different. Ms. Diaz, who spoke a second ago, she is a social studies teacher. I've actually known her since she was 12. That's my old student, that's a Stanford grad, and as you can see in the passion in her voice, she's, she's focused every day on our students. So I'm just really taken off guard by, I, I don't know what y'all think we're doing in classrooms right now, but we, we are totally focused right now on, on your students. In fact, I originally came to beg and plead on class sizes for next year, because as y'all have heard me say before, the quality of instruction, especially with writing, is just so, so tied to class sizes. But now I, I feel compelled to, to add my two cents here that, you know, I'm, I'm sort of a nerdy person, and years ago, I saw in Washington DC at the National Archives, in one space, they had the Magna Carta on loan, they had a court transcript from Susan B. Anthony on getting arrested for voting, and they had a letter from an escaped enslaved person who had run away to fight for the British because that's how he could have freedom. And I remember thinking that it was so moving because that's, that's what we're talking about here. It's the totality and the richness of our country's history. And as in-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Turner made it from traffic? Yes, ma'am, you're next.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Jaleen Turner. I'm a teacher assistant at Luella Merit Elementary School. I have a bachelor's degree in child development, I have a master's degree in child development and early childhood education. My master's thesis was the evaluation of a home-based enrichment program on mothers' interaction and teaching skills 40 years ago. Parents are their first and primary teacher of our children. All you parents and children, please stand. These children are here, their parents are here advocating for this program to recognize that our parents are the first teachers of our children. Our motto is to prepare all students to be successful in college, careers, and community. It starts long before pre-K. It starts here. The parents that have spoken have been eloquent in the benefits of this program for not only these students, but the ones that have progressed into our elementary schools, into our middle schools and high schools, and into our communities. I continue to implore you to-
Thank you. Just double check in, is Zolkiis Carmen here? Okay, we will proceed to the statements, so we'll begin with Cindy Verastegui.
To President Ramis, Clint Bond, and I will alternate the reading of the statements tonight.
Great, thank you.
My name is Cindy Verastegui, and my son Matthew Orosco, who is 19 months right now, has been a part of this program since I was pregnant. This program is helping us develop Matthew's skills. He knows now how to hold a crayon, how to paint, how, with a brush, loves storytime, and loves interactions with older kids, and I do, too. As a stay-at-home mom, this is my only way to get to know people. He is learning a lot, and we are so sad we are losing the opportunity to have this amazing program. Please help us keep this amazing program and let us be a super parent teacher. Thanks.
From Magala Morales, good, good morning. I just wanted to let you know we disagree. The district-
So we'll begin with Cindy Verastegui.
To President Ramis, Clint Bond and I will alternate the reading of the statements tonight.
Great, thank you.
My name is Cindy Verastegui and my son Matthew Orosco, who is 19 months right now, has been a part of this program since I was pregnant. This program is helping us develop Matthew's skills. He knows now how to hold a crayon, how to paint with a brush, loves story time, and loves interactions with older kids, and I do too. As a stay at home mom, this is my only way to get to know people. He is learning a lot and we are so sad we are losing the opportunity to have this amazing program. Please help us keep this amazing program and let us be a super parent teacher.
From Magala Morales, good morning. I just wanted to let you know we disagree. The district should not remove Parents as Teachers program. The program has helped my son Dylan Oliveros and daughter Alex Perez. The program does work and helps children. Please do not remove the program.
Garcia, good morning. I'm a mother from Parents as Teachers. We have been there since 2011. I have a 10-year-old son, a seven-year-old daughter, a five-year-old daughter, and a one-year-old son. Thanks to Parents as Teachers, my kids have learned a lot. It's helped them out going into pre-K. My kids already knew what was going to happen and we were ready because of Parents as Teachers. My oldest son took the most advantage of Parents as Teachers. Thanks to this program, I was able to get the knowledge of ECI. My son Leonardo was in speech therapy. I would have never had the knowledge of ECI if it weren't for Parents as Teachers. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful day.
From Lupita Abilas, good afternoon. I am one of the parents that is in the Parents as Teachers program. The truth is, the program made it easy for my daughter to take interest in school at such an early age. I have two children, my son who is in first grade and my daughter who is about to enter pre-K. It was very difficult for my son to take interest in school because he was not in the program and was too attached to me. With my daughter, we enrolled and joined the program because I did not want her to be sad and wanted her to learn and socialize with other children her age. I think it would be a good idea for the program to continue, even though the program will be different. My daughter is eager to start school. I believe the program will continue helping early age children be excited to attend school. The program taught us to be better parents and help meet our children's educational and social emotional needs. I hope the program will continue with the district and not get rid of it.
The next statement is from Isela Estrada. The Parents as Teachers program greatly benefited my son. He likes the activities we do and is motivated to know that his teacher is watching his progress. Thank you for reaching this opportunity. Maria Arenas and Edwin Estrada, who graduated from school this year.
From Mindy White, initially I signed up to make a public comment in person. However, despite an April 5th, 2021 CDC FOIA Freedom of Information Act statement, CDC is not aware of any randomized control trials that show that masks or double masks or cloth face coverings are effective against COVID-19. Fort Worth ISD continues to require masks, therefore I am submitting my statement to be read as I cannot wear a mask. I am a parent of a graduating senior and an adult ESI instructor with Fort Worth ISD. Three years ago, my son began attending a Fort Worth ISD school. He was greeted with such statements as, "I hate white people." "You're white, you don't belong here." "You're white, your opinion doesn't matter." "You're white, you have white privilege." Needless to say, this impacted him and our family. Through statements made to the superintendent and members of the Department of Equity and Excellence, I have come to understand that Fort Worth ISD has adopted the worldview of critical race theory as a means of addressing issues of race and achieving academic goals. This concerns me as I do not agree with the teaching of CRT. My family holds a very different worldview. If as a teacher I promoted my worldview as ardently as I have heard employees of Fort Worth ISD promote their critical theory and critical theory applied to race worldview, I would be reprimanded and possibly fired. While I am not speaking in an official capacity for my adult students and the time has expired.
The next statement is from Juanita Rivas. I am a mother currently enrolled with the Parents as Teachers program. My children have been with the program, which has helped me with my children's education and development. It would be a shame if the district discontinues the program because teachers depend on the program's ability to prepare early age children for school. The program's parent handouts on child development, social, emotional, and motor skills made me a better parent teacher and my children better students. I hope my brief testimony and that of other parents will help keep the Parents as Teachers program with the district for many years to come.
Ida Maya Amaya, hi. First, I want to thank the program Parents as Teachers for being a big help, supporting us who are learning about children's development and being so informative and patient with us parents. My daughter has been a part of the program and it has helped her to get prepared for school, teaching her how to play and be around other kids who are also in the progress of learning. She's learned how to speak, make friends. She's learned how to express herself and much more other things. I myself have learned a lot from the program as well, from conversating with the instructor about my concerns to make friendships with other parents as well. The program has really helped my daughter and me feel not alone. We truly love the program and wish for it to be continued.
From Myra Mendoza, the program helped my son socialize with other early age children. The parent educator Diana Castillo noticed and brought to my attention that there was something wrong with my son. Upon entering pre-K, the school's diagnostician diagnosed my son with autism. Thanks in part to the program, I knew about my son's autism.
From a concerned grandmother, I'm a grandmother of grandchildren that have participated in the Parents as Teacher program. I took my first grandchild to the program about 14 years ago. Please keep the program because it is very helpful. Thank you.
Brenda Arieta, the program Parents as Teachers helped me a lot with my two daughters. It makes me so much, it makes so much of a difference on what they learn from home than with the program.
Daisy Chaparro, I would like to give my opinion regarding the Parents as Teachers program. Personally, this program helped me become more familiar with child development and the importance of educating my son at an early age. Equally important, my son showed interested, was more focused in his education, and was prepared for pre-K.
Avila, I would like to ask the board not to eliminate the Parents as Teachers program. This program has helped me and taught me about my teachers, my children's growth and development. The information the program provided truly helped my children become independent learners as they entered kindergarten.
From Carolina Delgado, we just wanted you to know how much this program has helped my family. I have a six-year-old that was enrolled since she was one and a two-year-old that has been attending since she was one as well. My girls didn't only learn so much about preschool, but also socializing, and I didn't know many people coming from overseas. But there I found my best friend for those hard years. It meant the work to me. Also, Mrs. Grimes has always been such a compassionate soul. She always, she's always full of the most fun activities for the kids in the classroom and my oldest daughter would expect her anxiously every time she came to our house for visits because she was so full of awesome activities. For any question I had, she had an answer and huge amount of documents for me to go through and read. I don't have special needs kids, but my oldest is gifted and Mrs. Grimes would help me address her needs as a gifted girl. Going to the library at West Park was an amazing experience every time and preparing the kids for kindergarten while having their parents at school was a great opportunity for them to thrive.
From Amber Murphy, Parents as Teachers has been huge for my family. Both kiddos have grown and thrived in this program. Bring back Fort Worth ISD Parents as Teachers. Thank you.
Kelly Smith, Parents as Teachers helped my child by giving me innovative ideas of ways to help him learn the tasks he needed to be accomplishing at each age. Whether it was learning patterns, writing letters, learning our ABCs, or just learning to take turns and experience the classroom setting, our teacher was always helping me to teach and help my child grow in ways appropriate for his age. Even in the pandemic, our teacher did a fabulous job getting materials to us and providing engaging Zoom classes. It would be a huge disservice to our community to not fund such a wonderful program.
Blackman, Parents as Teachers has been very beneficial for my son. He started at four years old. I put him in the program because he was very apprehensive about going to kindergarten. This program allowed him to see how school was with the safety of mom next to him. Throughout the year, he became very comfortable in the school setting and felt more prepared to begin school on his own. The most beneficial part was at the end of the year, Mrs. Grimes was able to take him into a kindergarten class and let him participate in a lesson. The immersion into the environment gave my son so much confidence and excitement. My son thrived in kindergarten the following year. He loves school and has blossomed so much. I contribute that so much to the dedication Mrs. Grimes puts into every class, lesson, and child that walks into her class.
From Jenny Gardner, Parents as Teachers has been very beneficial for my son. He learned so many things while going. We really enjoyed the activities to do together each week. It was a class we always looked forward to going to. I wish I would have known about it sooner because my other two sons would have gone. I hope y'all all consider keeping it around. My son is in first grade and reads at a fifth grade level. The amount of resources and ideas from Parents as Teachers was great.
Mao, for 34 years, the Parents as Teachers program has provided a place for kids under four to interact and for parents to bond together, creating a supportive community where kids can learn and grow. My son was blessed to be a part of this community for three years. It's because of this program that we recognized his needs for speech therapy and we were able to get him help with a speech therapist at Benbrook Elementary School. Please save this program for our future families.
From Alicia Nicholson, the Parents as Teacher program at Benbrook Elementary with Mrs. Grimes is more than just a program. It gave our family a community to be a part of, a classroom experience with structured learning activities to help our son in preparation for pre-K. It gave our son an opportunity for socialization with other kids his age that he's been able to build friendships with that he has otherwise would not have been exposed to because he is not in daycare. Mrs. Grimes and this program have been beyond beneficial to our son's emotional and educational growth over the past two years. Please rethink the fund allocation for our Parents as Teachers.
Katie Huff, this program has helped me as a stay at home mom have an outline of what I should be teaching my child to prepare her to be ready for kindergarten. She shouldn't be punished or fall behind her peers who are enrolled in Montessori daycares just because I want to stay at home with her. We need these programs.
From Bianca Martinez, this program has helped my children become familiar with school routines.
I want to share how Parents as Teachers has been a positive resource. Parents as Teachers in Benbrook Elementary has had a great impact in helping our children educationally. Not only is it a great resource in preparing our future scholars, the relationship between our teacher friend, Mrs. Grimes, and other families have had a positive impact in helping our family grow. My son is an example of the benefits provided by PAT and I would hope you would reconsider keeping this program, especially with the regression during COVID. Our children's social skills and education has been hit hard and is in need of PAT. Thank you.
From Amy Perez, Parents as Teachers has been a great program for all four of my children. They range from five to 16 now, but we have enjoyed this program for years. It helps prepare them socially for school as well as teach the parents what the kids need to prepare for school. When we are struggling financially, we were given resources to help us as well as helping to identify my son having a hearing problem. This program is just a wonderful early childhood program. It also builds relationships between parents and build a community. We really enjoyed meeting weekly and being on campus and becoming familiar with the schools along with having a monthly home visit. Just something the kids thoroughly enjoy. Mrs. Grimes took the time to get to know the needs of not only that specific child, but each child in the family as well as the parents. Please save this program so that the future children in the communities can also benefit from it as well. Thank you.
From Ivana Puentez, hello, everyone. I am happy with the Parents as Teachers program because my daughters learned to interact and socialize with other children. We, the parents enrolled in the program, would like for the program to continue with the district and listen to our voice regarding the program's assistance in educating our children. Thank you very much.
From Indiro Rubio Lopez, the Parents as Teachers program helped me become my child's first teacher in his education.
Parents as Teachers helped out family by providing us with good sources, good feedback, and great activities to do with my son. My son has learned so much. He was really shy at the beginning and not talking much, but now he has opened up so much and is talking better. It makes me sad to know you want to close this program. Please reconsider and keep it open. Thank you.
From Alyssa Martinez, hello. Parents as Teachers has helped my family for the past seven years. I have six children. My second oldest was three when we moved back to Fort Worth after being an active duty military family for six years. My family was adjusting to civilian life and moving again for the sixth time. Michelle Grimes was very sweet and supportive in welcoming us to West Park Elementary. My daughter and I got to make friends and connections with the school before she entered kindergarten there, which helped ease the anxiety of transition for both of us. Parents as Teachers has always provided our family a safe place to introduce our youngest children from infancy to toddlerhood to learn and grow and connect with others. It has done the same for me as a parent. I am always learning and growing too, and Parents as Teachers has helped me make friendships with other parents that share the same challenges. I know if I need help or have a question that Parents as Teachers has the resources to lead me in the right direction. And although this past year has been a great challenge for everyone, Parents as Teachers still provided a way for us to connect and learn through Zoom calls and live weekly lessons through social media, as well as personal phone calls to check on each individual family's mental health and needs. My children, Mia, Isabella, Nicholas, and Olivia have all had the honor to be in Michelle Grimes' Parents as Teachers classroom, and I was looking forward to my youngest Lucia and the time has expired.
From Sharon Davis, Parents as Teachers has helped my family so much in the last four years because it has made me intentional about what I teach and how I teach my kids. Benbrook teacher Michelle Grimes will forever be a part of our lives. She has helped me set goals for myself and my kids so that they are always striving to learn and experience new things. I have three boys, ages six, three, and one, and we will truly be affected by the program not being a part of our day and city and lives. Mrs. By the program not being a part of our, okay. Mrs. Grimes truly goes above and beyond and is not only a teacher, but a friend to me and a grandma figure in my kids' lives. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
From Se Dominguez, my son takes care of the instructions they give him. Save the Fathers as Teachers program.
Teachers helped my children follow instructions and wait their turn.
From Marissa Moro, Parents as Teachers has really helped my kids and my family over the past three years. It has been a great learning environment, not only for my toddlers, but for my infants. It has given me resources as a mother to help create an age-appropriate learning environment at home. Over this past year during the pandemic, having virtual experience classes has been extremely helpful for me as a stay at home mom who spent half the school year as an extremely sick pregnant mother with an 18-month-old and the other half a mother with a two-year-old and a newborn. Needless to say, it has been a hard year for me as it has been for many other people. It has also helped my children be around other children their age and make new friends when, when we're new to the area. It has also connected me with other mothers with children the same age. It has become a support group. Having the monthly meetings with Mrs. Grimes has helped me as a mother as well. She has given developmental advice for each of my children throughout their time in the program and even after. I have been able to turn to her for advice when I have attached the needed it. She has given me support through the good and easy times and through hard and bad times. She goes above and beyond the call of duty for her families because she cares. I believe it would be a detrimental to our children, mothers, and community to not continue this program. There are many other mothers and children who do not have the academic and emotional support that Parents as Teachers provide.
From Gloria Hernandez, I am grandmother of Sofia Lopera. I was with the Parents as Teachers program in 2020 and I accompanied my granddaughter to learn and play classes. During my time with the program, I experienced productive, informative, and useful classes. Furthermore, the classes permitted my granddaughter to be with me as she learned to adapt and transition to a learning environment. My opinion regarding this program is I would like for the district to keep the program because other children will benefit and experience what my granddaughter experienced, adapting and transitioning to a learning environment. My personal experience about the program was joyful because I experienced firsthand my granddaughter's child development in social emotional stages. Cordially, Gloria Hernandez.
From Violeta Garcia, the Parents as Teachers From Violeta Garcia, The Parents as Teachers program helped my son with his education. Children currently enrolled in the program learn and benefit from the learn and play classes.
From Annette Presley, I am writing to ask that you say no to critical race theory as it is extremely racist and will do nothing but enslave our children. CRT teaches that white people are superior to black people, that black people are helpless victims who can't do anything unless white people help them out. It's insane that this racist ideology is even being considered in our schools. Racism has no place in America. If we teach our kids to judge each other based on skin color, which is what CRT teaches, then we are actively teaching our kids to be racist. We cannot end racism when we teach our kids to be racist. Please do the right thing for our kids and for our country. Say no to CRT in the school curriculum. It will only destroy us as a nation and as a people. Thank you.
From Pam Weatherford, The year was 1968. Martin Luther King Jr. had just been assassinated. Ms. Jane Elliott, a third-grade teacher in Iowa, desperately needed to help her students process what had happened and understand the evils of racism. She began a two-day experiment she called Blue Eyes Brown Eyes. The first day, students with blue eyes were given preferential treatment, positive reinforcement, and made to feel superior over those with brown eyes. They got to go to lunch first, had extra time on the playground, and were told they were smarter and better than the brown-eyed kids. The brown-eyed kids wore brown collars so there would be no denying who was inferior. The second day, the procedure was reversed, and the brown-eyed kids were made superior. Ms. Elliott couldn't believe what she saw. Whichever group received preferential treatment performed enthusiastically in class, answered questions quickly and accurately, and performed better on tests. Those who were discriminated against felt downcast, were hesitant and uncertain in their answers, and performed poorly on tests. Fast forward to 1984. Ms. Elliott's students are now grown, and they are reuniting. It was Ms. Elliott's first chance to find out if the lesson had impacted her students. They recall feeling shame and anger and were wearing the brown collars and elation and superiority when they shed the collars. They agreed that racism and prejudice are wrong. The exercise had a lasting impression on them. Ms. Elliott saw how easily the student's self-esteem and self-worth was taken away simply, and the time has expired.
From Maria Sanchez, Hello, my name is Maria Sanchez, and my son's name is Abel Martinez. I enrolled my son with the Parents as Teachers program since he was seven months old. Since being with the program, I learned the different stages of child development and ways of educating my child at home. Some of the activities the program provided to me teach my son range from colors, shapes, and numbers. I hope the program will continue so my son can continue learning and be ready for school.
From Thomas Ellery, My name is Thomas Ellery and have volunteered with Fort Worth ISD and many other districts in the DFW area for nearly two decades. Critical race theory is a dangerous plan to indoctrinate how our young children with a divisive propaganda that should never be allowed in public schools. It is designed to undermine our God-ordained heritage, including our God-given freedoms, rights, and responsibilities. It demeans our individuality as people created in God's image, which includes our skin color, cultural distinctiveness, and historic backgrounds, and even the sex God created us with. It seeks to undermine truth and reality and replace it with ungodly vanity and insanity. It would also assert our God-ordained personal responsibilities and instead teach our generation to blame everyone and everything else in the world so we don't look at our own darkness within. Finally, it will set our society for more moral failure, confusion, and chaos rather than true success and to aspire for excellence, and God will hold us all accountable for how we stewarded the generation that He privileged us to be alive in.
It was brought to my attention that funding for the current Parents as Teachers program will not be available for next year. This saddens me as a current Fort Worth ISD parent, being my daughter was a direct beneficiary of this wonderful program. Taryn White, my now-seven-year-old daughter, was a participant in the program with Michelle Grimes at Benbrook Elementary School. Michelle's dedication to completing home visits with Taryn as well as onsite classroom visits contributed to her quickly learning ABCs, counting of numbers, saying her name, and many other early fundamentals needed before starting Benbrook Elementary's pre-K program. Not only did Michelle teach Taryn directly both in home and in the school classroom, she also ensured to pass along the teaching materials and how to apply the learnings to both myself, my husband, and my mom, as we all play a major role in Taryn's education. Taryn currently is in second grade at West Park Elementary and has maintained straight A's to date. By her being in Parents as Teachers early on, we have no doubt the program provided the necessary coaching, teachable moments, and formation of strong study habits that are critical to a child's early learning and continued support from their parents' family. Please reconsider the use of available funding to support this program so that in future, incoming children can benefit from the program as Taryn has to date. Thanks for your consideration, and we're out of time.
From Myra Lira, Good afternoon. I am writing this statement to share my experience with the Parents as Teachers program. This program has been a great help to my daughter's education and child development. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the program has demonstrated affection and compassion by providing community resources to the families that need extra assistance. The parent educator is a great and responsible person with educating other children and parents enrolled in the program. I hope the program will continue since it has been a great help to my child.
Patrice Corrigan, Please include my comment requesting the board to vote against implementing critical race theory for tonight's meeting. We do not need any further victim or them versus us mentality, nor do we need to be hyphen Americans. We are Americans first and need to be united under the Constitution of the United States of America. Our enemies claim that our diversity is our weakness. I say our diversity is one of our greatest strengths.
From Cindy Peterson, As I write this, I know there will be much more eloquent speakers at the meeting tonight and in other messages you may receive. However, I feel that it is very important for me to take a stand and share my feelings and insights on the subject of critical race theory. I became aware of the plan to implement CRT into various organizations, businesses, and government bodies a little over a year ago. As I studied it, I see no indication that it would improve our children's education. As I observe children today, most of them don't even see skin color. They are all just friends. CRT is designed to point out those differences, causing division and conflict. These children today have never suffered or caused suffering on one another. Our country was founded on freedom and liberty for all. Our forefathers fought and died to keep us in the land of the free and the home of the brave. I implore you to ban CRT in our schools and focus on true education. As our great state is working to ban CRT throughout the state, it puzzles me why our superintendent would even consider implementing this in our schools.
From Chris Burdett, Dear Board of Education members, critical race theory and any curriculum that demeans a race has no place in the Fort Worth public schools. It does not matter what the curriculum is called. Any curriculum that shames any race or blames that race should not be tolerated. Math is not a racist discipline. It is not racist to show your work for math problems, and it is not racist to solve a math problem. Achievement is not racist but should be encouraged for all students. These are a few of my thoughts.
Okay. Absolutely. Ms. Welski, yes. You're welcome.
not provide any individual who receives the vaccine with immunity.
At the COVID vaccine.
Nor does it prevent the spread of the disease. It does not meet the CDC's own definition of a vaccine. That's why it's a deceptive trade practice under 15 U.S. Code, Section 41 of the Federal Trade Commission, for pharmaceutical companies who are producing this experimental gene therapy to claim that it's a vaccine. These pharmaceutical companies are lying to the public. The government health bureaucrats are also lying to the public by calling this treatment a vaccine. This COVID-19 experimental gene therapy is only designed to minimize your symptoms if you were to be infected with the COVID-19 virus. Let me reemphasize that this COVID-19 experimental gene therapy does not meet the CDC's own definition of what a vaccine is. It does not provide immunity or prevent the spread of the disease. By referring to this therapy as a vaccine, the pharmaceutical companies are attempting to shield themselves because vaccine injuries or deaths are exempted by law from any product liability lawsuits. The United States Health bureaucrats initiated Operation Warp Speed to fast-track the so-called COVID vaccine. On December 11, 2020, the FDA approved the Pfizer vaccine, and Moderna's vaccine was approved just a week later.
Thank you all for sharing your thoughts this evening. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clint Bond for a recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. The UIL State Track and Field Meet was held May 6 through the 8 in Austin. Fort Worth ISD was represented at this year's UIL State Track Meet and Field Meet by six high schools. For consecutive years, excluding last spring, of course, we have had students compete in all three UIL conferences in which our high schools are aligned. This first student is not with us, but we will certainly recognize him anyway. In the 4A Division, Benbrook senior Dontre Senegal won the gold medal in the triple jump with a jump of 46 feet, two and a half inches. In the process, Dontre made history, becoming the first male to win a state gold medal in Benbrook's history. Dontre is a multi-sport athlete who has also played football and basketball. Dontre is an all-state academic and will attend and play football at Murray University. He is coached by Dustin Altmiller, and the Benbrook principal is Mr. Richard Pendleton. Let's congratulate Dontre again. Dariante Hall, would you please stand? Okay, thank you. Also in 4A, junior Dariante Hall of Dunbar High School earned a bronze medal in the 100-meter dash with a time of 10.54 seconds. Dariante is, he also plays football for the Wildcats, and he's coached by Nelson Akinwanda, and Dunbar's principal is Mr. Oscar Adams. Let's congratulate Dariante. Keondra Davis, are you here? Thank you. In the 5A Division is one of the Fort Worth ISD's nationally-known track athletes, senior Keondra Davis of Trimble Tech High School. Keondra capped her high school career the way that it started with a gold medal-winning sprinter's double. Keondra won the 100-meter dash in 11.27 seconds and the 200-meter dash with a time of 23.11 seconds. Keondra, who won the 100-meter dash at the prestigious Prefontaine Classic in 2019, participated in the state track meet every year of her career again, excluding last spring due to COVID, collecting her fourth and fifth state medals. Keondra entered the current school year as the number-one sprint recruit in the United States. Keondra is also an academic all-stater as well and will take her talents to the University of Southern California in the fall. The Trimble Tech track coaches are Donna Wilson and Clayton Brookins. Both coaches are Trimble Tech alumni and former high school and collegiate track standouts themselves. The principal of Trimble Tech High School is Mr. Omar Ramos. Let's congratulate her again. And our last student is not here either with us this evening. In the 6A Division, Pascal High School senior Will Marshall won the silver medal in the 400-meter dash with a time of 48.11 seconds. While Will played football for the Panthers, the multi-sport athlete made the all-state academic team in two sports. Will was recently voted the Star Telegram Boys Track Athlete of the Week. He will attend Detroit Mercy and play lacrosse. Yes. Will is coached by Michael Holcomb, and the Pascal principal is Mr. Troy Langston. So again, if you are one of the athletes or families of one of the athletes or friends of one of the athletes, would you stand so we can recognize you also, please? And just so, would all the coaches who are here please stand? And of course, our executive athletic director is Todd Vesely, and I believe he is not here this evening, and he's being represented by Dr. Lisa Langston.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. I believe Trustee Jackson will give our next recognition. Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, President Ramos. I want to thank all of you that are here tonight, and you're here on a very special occasion. Fay Daniels, who is right over here, has been working for Fort Worth ISD for 34 years, working on behalf of children. And for 15 of those years, she's worked with the board, and we, the board, want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Fay and to wish you the very best retirement ever. And if you're ever bored with retirement, just know that any Tuesday evening, the board would love to welcome you back to join us, and we have a keepsake for you. But first, Fay, you know I would do something for you. You have a footrest because that's what you do when you're retired. You get to rest your feet. You get to check the thermometer and the weather, and then you have a yellow seal to go around your neck to put your badge on so you can come and support Christian and Laura when they want a day off because they haven't been with the board for 15 years. And on that note, we'll bring down your gift, and we also have another present for you.
That will conclude our recognitions. We will move on to item number five, which is reports and presentations. 5A will be Lone Star Governance Constraints 3, 4, and 5. Dr. Scribner and Ms. Molina, are there any, or I'm sorry, we'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you very much, President Ramos. At this time, we'll begin to look at our goal, our Lone Star Governance Constraints 3, 4, and 5, and I'll turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Karen Molina, who'll take us through this.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner and board. Yeah, we're very excited this evening to present our constraints 3, 4, and 5. And then actually, you will, like, we're all getting used to being able to do our own clicking now in person. So our constraints 3, just as a reminder, is about transparency and communication. 4 is instructional time, and constraint 5 is racial and ethnic equity. So just as a reminder, transparency and stakeholder communication. We adopted a board monitoring calendar this year, and the board monitoring calendar has us coming and do reports at least four times on student outcome goals. Goals 1, 2, and 3, as well as our constraints, and we're happy to say that we have reached 100% of our board monitoring calendar under goals 1, 2, and 3. Parents as partners is part of our constraints. In our parent portal, we adopted this to increase our communication between our parents. As of last year in October, we had 36,986 parents who were actively in our parent portal accounts. As of, and that should say 21, as of May the 19th, we have 40,644. So we have, we've seen an increase of 36 hundred parents. And we want to continue to have more parents register in our parent portals, but some of our parents also have multiple siblings, so they only register once, and they have access to multiple students in that parent portal. The other part of communication that we want to be intentional about was our Let's Talk feature that you can find on our website, and you've seen us use it in town halls as well as other meetings where we've asked for feedback from our stakeholders, our parents, teachers, and any community stakeholder. It's been a goal of ours, and we've been very specific wanting to increase our customer service to our parents and our community members, and that you'll see a positive trend for feedback, because if you respond on Let's Talk, then we ask you how did we do a customer service base across the district and different departments, and that you'll see that we have increased to a nine as of May currently this month. And we start in September 2020 at a 6.7. So definitely a positive increase in customer service for all of our stakeholders that utilize Let's Talk. Instructional time. So this one is about our out-of-school suspensions. And you'll see here, we want to be very transparent about our data. You'll see on the left-hand column, the dark blue bar, 2019, 2020, you'll see we had African-American females, unduplicated students receiving out-of-school suspensions at a 54 percentage rate. And that was, we have 21% total African, female African-American students enrolled in Fort Worth ISD. You'll see a decrease of a 4% according to our fourth six weeks of this school year. However, we do want to note that we do also have a decline of in-person instruction across our district with enrollment. Of course, this is still, in our opinion, way too high for our African-American females. However, we do want to bring the data to you. You'll see on the data sources that due to COVID, you will see a comparison from the third six weeks to the fourth six weeks. The other part of our constraints is African-American students, both males and females, and you'll see that we also have a decrease of 3%, but as well, just a reminder that we do have less in-person students enrolled as our district than last year. Our Hispanic, unduplicated students receiving out-of-school suspension, we have an actual increase of 2% of our Hispanics students from last year to the fourth six weeks of this school year. Racial and ethnic equity, we would love to share. We're very excited about this data. We've been sharing this through our emergency constraints. We have increased to 63% for in-person instruction, where we were around 47% in October. So our students are coming back to school. This data was pulled as, as early as yesterday, as late as yesterday. So you'll see that we're now at 63% in-person and 37 virtual. So we're really excited, and I know we only have four weeks of school back, but I'm going to say it like I do every meeting, our doors are open. We welcome you any day that ends with Y, except Saturday and Sunday. Come on back. We'll see you tomorrow. Student retention has been something we've really been focusing on since, really, over the last, since 2017, 2016, being very intentional about putting resources in place as well as monitoring. You'll see that this is our Fall's Team Data from last year, that we still have 1.3% students retained, and you'll see the breakdown by our subgroup. Early college high school is another part of our constraint about the enrollment of our racial groups, and you'll see that we have 1.37 percentage of our early college students enrolled, so we're really excited. This is still, early college high school is, is one of our programs that definitely has been around, but we're increasing that on our campuses, our high school campus, that Dr. Sines can share and answer any questions about. PTEC is our newest initiative that we are including and embedding into our high schools, and you recently have adopted some board item agendas to really help enhance the opportunities at PTEC. So this number does seem a little bit lower on 373, because it's a brand-new program, but we're very excited because this is a great opportunity for some career opportunities for our students. Of course, our programs of choice are very popular in our district. We have students that transfer across our middle school, our high schools, as well as our elementary schools, and some of our programs and schools of choice. So we wanted to share today our students by our racial group as well. So over 13,000 students in our district and our families take advantage of our programs of choice and our schools of choice within our district. So at this time, we know our constraints don't have as lengthy data points, but we did want to provide the data to you this evening, and we do have our chiefs up here to be able to answer any questions concerning the report.
Thank you. Looks like first question or comment comes from Trustee Paus, and colleagues, I'll just encourage you to use the screen to request to speak or ask questions. Trustee Paus?
Thank you. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I wanted to say that it is very encouraging to look at our enrollment in our early college high school and PTEC and schools of choice and see that we're finally starting to reflect the actual demographics of the district. So I know that you've worked really hard on that, Mr. Sines, so thank you for that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Looks like none on this item, so we'll move on to 5B, which is the 2021-2022 Budget Update.
And if you, and if you will, President Ramos...
I'll ask that you please maintain order for the purposes of us running our board meeting. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Scribner. Yes, sir. It's on you, Mr. Ball.
President, Dr. Scribner, thank you for the opportunity to give you this update. We are approaching the time that our fiscal year will be beginning, and so we've got, we've got an update we wanted to provide the board with what the next 30 days or so will look like as we finish the process of developing our budget and publish it and then present it to the board for the recommended adoption in June. So we'll look at, at the, we'll look at the current state of where we are in terms of federal budgeting as well. We've got a new development that we learned about on April the 28th. And so the numbers that you'll see tonight were developed before we knew that we were going to receive the significant federal funds that are coming our way. And because of the timelines involved in the, in the publication process, which we'll talk about in a minute, you'll see that there really isn't time to change the numbers now that we know that the federal money's coming our way. So, so I say that to say that the board should expect some significant budget amendments once our fiscal year begins and we develop the plan that we will submit in late July for the federal funding that, that we'll, we'll show you the amount here in just a moment. And so we'll talk about next steps that we need to do, which will be in a later slide. So I wanted to begin by talking about some legislative issues, some of which were actually happening today. Two significant issues that remain a little bit of an uncertainty, although the uncertainty is beginning, is beginning to clear up and will be clear by next weekend. And so the first of those is whether or not we'll be funding, there will be funding for virtual instruction in the, in the '21-'22 fiscal year, and that issue is trending towards a no, from, from my best information that I, that I have, although it's not totally settled yet, it's, it's trending in the no direction. The second item there is, I'll just get to the bottom line, that's trending toward a yes. It, it's looking like the, in House Bill 1525, the, the Senate will, will add an amendment that requires or authorizes the Commissioner of Education to require public school districts to reserve 40% of the federal SER III funds that would be allocated to us. In our case, that's a little over $104 million that we would be required to reserve for the '24-'25 fiscal year. And so again, this, this is not a certainty yet. It's still likely to be a conference committee issue, and there may be even a floor amendment. We're not sure exactly how that's going to play out. Some of that may be going on as, as we're meeting right now. It was scheduled on the Senate's calendar today, so we're not really sure where, where that is, but it's trending toward yes, that will be a requirement. And so this slide actually shows you the allocation that, that Fort Worth ISD is scheduled to receive. And the, the way the federal U.S. Department of Education has decided to release these funds is in two different tranches. The, the first release is for two-thirds of the total allocation, and that will be available to us as soon as we submit the application, which is due in late July. And prior to that, there's a fair amount of public input that, that needs to be obtained and various other things in, in putting together our spending plan. The, the last third there that you see has, will be released once the U.S. Department of Education has fleshed out some of their regulations. So we've not heard a, a specific timeline on that, but the total of the SER III allocation for Fort Worth ISD is $261.5 million there, you see in the far, far right-hand corner there that's highlighted. Then this slide talks about the, the timeline for the budget adoption. Just, just to remind everyone, the district is on a fiscal year that ends on June 30th of each year, and so on July 1 of this year, our new budget year will, will begin, and state law requires that we have a budget that's adopted by the board before the beginning of that fiscal year. And so the, the regularly scheduled board meeting for June 22nd, 2021, fits right into that timeline to be the appropriate time that we would have the, the public hearing for the, for the adoption of the budget. And so we are required to, to publish that in the newspaper sometime between 30 days prior and 10 days prior. And so the, the 30-day time period has already passed, and so we will be, one of the things we're looking for tonight is, we just want sort of a head nod, it's not really an action item, but if there's any objection to us publishing the numbers that you'll see in a moment, now would be a good time to say so, because we, we have to get them published before June the 12th. And then the other decision, and I think, I think that decision's been made already, but at the time we drafted this slide, we, we will have to publish in the, in the notice whether it will be an in-person meeting or a virtual meeting. And so we, we will assume that if we're meeting in person tonight, we will be in, on June 22nd as well. So this slide shows you the actual budget that we would be hopefully presenting to the board on June the 22nd for adoption. And again, I would, I would reiterate what I said earlier, that, that we put these numbers together before we knew that we would have the $260 million in SER III funding that we just mentioned. And so, and because of the timeline you just saw in the publication and all, it, it's just not practical for us to, to meaningfully adjust these numbers when we don't even have our spending plan for the SER III money that, that will take over, over the next month and a half, we'll be developing. And so we will be recommending this to the board on June 22nd for adoption. It does show almost a $51 million deficit in the general fund, and it, and it shows a positive addition to fund balance in the debt service fund, and, and it shows a break-even in the child nutrition fund, and, and that will be relevant as we discuss the last item on the agenda tonight. So unless the board directs us otherwise, we'll be publishing these in the, in the Star Telegram sometime before June the 12th, along with some information about our tax rate. And what we'll be, what we'll be publishing for the tax rate is the same rates that we had, that the board adopted last year in August. And the M&amp;O tax rate, or maintenance and operations tax rate currently is a dollar and 8.64 cents, and the interest in sinking fund portion of the tax rate is 29.2 cents, for a total of 1.3784 for the total rate. And the, the reason we'll be publishing last year's rate is because the, if you remember in the last legislative session, there was a Senate Bill 2 that required us to, to do tax compression, and that tax compression is based on statewide property value data that has not yet been released. And so what we know is that the current rate, it will be no higher than the current rate. So once we get the, the statewide property value data, we'll make a determination about how Fort Worth ISD's values compare to that, and from that, we will determine how much our maintenance and operations tax rate will be reduced. And so we, we will not likely have that information before the publication deadline, so we'll publish last year's rates. And the good news is, there will be no tax increase proposed, either for the maintenance and operations rate or the debt service rate for this year. In fact, there, there will very likely be a tax rate reduction. This is a required disclosure. It's identical to the slide we showed the board last year. This is required in accordance with the requirements of House Bill 3 from the, from the '86 legislature, which just requires that we disclose to the board and to the public that state funding now is based on current-year property values, when prior to House Bill 3, it was based on prior-year values. And so this is just a, a required disclosure that we, we want to put on record, that we have made, because this affects... made, because this affects our financial integrity rating system or our first rating if we don't do that. So we've made that disclosure, and that's not a change from the prior year. The other thing that's in this budget is a provision for at least a 2% compensation increase. And so that's, those are the assumptions that were made in the development of this budget. And just so the board, for the board's information, each percentage point of across-the-board salary increase costs somewhere between $6 and $8 million. And so just for a planning number, that's what that looked like. And so the proposed next steps that we have before us are, we do plan to, at the June 22 meeting, to recommend the board adopt the budget that you've just seen. In either the July or August meeting, I think in recent years, we've done it in August, there would be a compensation plan presented to the board for the 21, 22 fiscal year. And then we will be very much involved between now and then in developing our learning recovery plan or fleshing out our learning recovery plan really, and assigning dollar values to that so that we can put together our funding utilization plan for the ESER III money that's been allocated to the district. We are required to submit a four-year plan by late July, and we've got this uncertainty hanging over us that I mentioned about this addition to House Bill 1525. And so we really won't know the answer to that probably until Sine Di happens or very shortly before then. And so that concludes the prepared remarks that I had, President Ramos, and I'd certainly be happy to address any questions the board might have.
Thank you. Looks like we have a questioner coming by trustee Toby Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Just a quick question, just clarification for the public. You said that a 1% raise would be between $6 and $8 million.
Yeah, per percentage.
We have a finite number for salaries, and is there a reason that you have a range of 6 to 8 million?
Because the, it's a great question, trustee Jackson, and because, as I mentioned, these budget numbers were developed before we knew that we were going to receive the ESER III funding. And prior to that, we were doing what's fiscally prudent is adjusting our budget downward for the decline in enrollment that we experienced this year of about 7,000 students. And on word that the money will be available then to really fund a robust learning recovery plan, that's going to involve a little bit of a pivot from the track we were on in developing the general fund budget. Before April 28th, when it was announced, we would get these funds. And so all that's to say, we're not sure exactly what the ultimate head count will be, and so that's why a little bit of a range is provided. But we will at some point know the finite number for that. Great observation.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that great answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have trustee Endar.
Thank you, President Ramos. Back on Slide 4, I think it was Slide 4, it lists the 2/3 of the total allocation that we would be eligible to receive in July. And I'm assuming, and it's never really safe to assume, that that is before the 40% is taken out if House Bill 1525 passes. Is that correct?
That is correct, trustee Endar.
So really, the money that we would have to spend would be 40% less of what we see on the screen?
That is correct. If that bill passes with that 40% potential reserve, I mean, the bill just gives the commissioner the authority to do that, doesn't require him to do that, but one would assume if they're pushing that through. And it's been said that it was a top priority of some of our statewide elected leaders. One would assume that they planned to do that. What's unclear at this point, and we were just literally discussing this this afternoon in my office with Mr. Johnson, our senior officer for budget and finance, how are they going to do that? Are they going to take the whole 40% out of that first tranche of money? Or are they going to prorate it, take, you know, 40% of 174 million, then 40% of 87 million? We're not sure. Presumably, there will be some regulations that will be developed that will clear that up. But at present, we don't even know if it's going to survive the legislative process. But we do believe, based on the information we have, that it's trending toward a yes on that.
So the state would keep the money? It wouldn't be that we would be required to put the money in a fund?
It's a great question.
And therefore, we could invest it and benefit from it. Instead, it would be the state that would be able to benefit from that money?
Great question, trustee Endar. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify that. As we understand the bill language, it would require public school districts to reserve 40%, an amount equivalent to 40% of the ESER allocation from state and local funds until the 24, 25 fiscal year. Because as we understand the federal legislation, the state is prohibited from supplanting or reducing its own obligation by the amount of these federal funds. But one would also assume if they can push, require us to push some of the state and local funding until a year after which the ESER eligibility period has concluded, then they would be able to supplant in a future year. And although we don't know what the motivation is, it, there's speculation in the school finance community that that might be the purpose of it. The other less nefarious purpose could be that they're thinking that local districts are not smart enough to plan on how to provide for a smooth transition once the federal funding is over with. And so that could be, that could be part of it as well. So pardon me for speculating about what someone's motives would be, but that is a significant issue. It's a $105 million issue for us.
And that's a significant issue?
It is, yes.
Yes. I have been, had the pleasure of visiting campuses this week and last week, and I have a few more to go to. And as I visit with principals, the constant, the immediate question that they have is, when can we start hiring? And they know that they're going to have openings, and I know that there are some surplus positions, but they're ready, they are ready to hit the road running. And we all know that the best teachers and the best administrators are available now as opposed to at the end of July or the beginning of August. Do we have to wait, or will principals have to wait until this budget has been passed at the end of June? Because then that sets this process yet another month behind.
Trustee Endar, if I could answer, we did start, last night, we had two sessions about ESER feedback. That is a requirement under, of course, the federal application process. Tomorrow morning, we're meeting with elementary principals in one session, middle school and high school. We also, I personally met with a group of high school principals just to get some feedback, and one of the things had been staffing. And then we have some DIRK and DAC, lots of other smaller stakeholder groups that we'll meet with. One of the things, we, as a small group, we do know the surplus is an issue, and wanting us to accelerate that, Mr. Ball and some team members met actually on Tuesday, Monday, yesterday, yesterday about that topic, and we are ready to start accelerating that process so we can start hiring. We do know also when you implement initiatives, sometimes that can cause some changes within the district internally with campus positions and so forth being moved around. So we want to make sure we're doing that very early. So we wanted to expedite meeting with the principals to really get their feedback. The teachers and the survey's been sent out to our parents and our teachers, but then also, we really want to encourage our parents to have their children, the students, take the survey. The student survey is very friendly. It's a little different than the adult survey, to ask them, what do they think they need to recover from COVID and learning loss? So we do want to hurry up and allow our principals to hire and place the surplus, definitely. But we also want to make sure we're listening to what our teachers, our principals, and our students think they need so that we have the funds available to implement those initiatives.
So any future hiring is dependent upon the ESER funding? I mean, as far as opening up?
No, ma'am, no.
Okay.
No, we do have some proposals that would put in place pretty quickly that our team's working on, looking at the surplus list to clean that up very quickly so then the current vacancies, the principals could start hiring very, very soon.
I like, I like "very, very soon."
Very, very, very soon.
That's a great answer. Three varies, even better.
I can do that.
Thank you. One of the principals, and I'm just going to throw this out there, it's not a question, but had what I thought was a good idea, but I'm also not the one that is dealing with this at the same level that you are, and that is to use those surplus teachers who have not been picked up or hired by a principal or on a campus as permanent substitutes in the district because we know that we have such a significant problem, as do a lot of school districts, with finding substitutes. Just going to throw that out there, plant a little seed.
Appreciate it.
So there you have it. Thank you very much for your answers.
Okay, trustee Brookins.
Okay. So my question is, is there a specific criteria where the ESER funds could be used for?
That's a great question, trustee Brookins. The answer is, there are some stipulations. There's a 20% requirement. 20% of the funding has to be dedicated toward a learning recovery plan. And beyond that, pretty much, it's fairly open in terms of if it benefits students and helps students to be successful, it's probably going to be allowable for the most part. And so it's pretty wide open.
Okay. So specifically for the students and not for salaries or?
So there's, yeah.
No, I wouldn't say that. Salaries, it will be, it will be very difficult to utilize the kind of funding we're talking about without using, using it to pay salaries. When salaries are about 80 to 85% of our total budget, we would, it would be difficult to use that kind of money without spending it on salary. And so a lot of what we've been talking about in this robust learning recovery plan is going to involve teacher salaries. And so those are going to be allowable under this federal funding.
Trustee Brookins, we are dividing it into four big buckets, and that's how we're presenting and getting feedback around those buckets. And some of them, of course, are what we call our family and parent empowerment, what do they need, as well as instructional resources. And that can be in FTEs, that can be in personnel, as well as other resources. So it's like really put into four buckets how we can do it. Some of the initiatives would be staffing, which would result in salary. Some of it could be, our high school principals are very, very innovative, and they have presented a couple of plans that would address some of the learning loss and credit recovery. That could be a stipend where we're not having to add someone, but our teachers that are already in place are very excited to be able to do something outside the box. So it could be more of a stipend for our teachers versus always adding an FTE. So I think when we bring our plan back on June 22nd, you're going to see a hybrid of all of those things. Wraparound services, of course, is going to be a big one for us as a district, not just social, or social-emotional, but also just outside of school time, Fort Worth after school expanding as well. So we're very excited. We've gotten some, got a great feedback just last night. But I think you're going to see a little bit of everything and outside the box. And really, our principals and our teachers are, they're giving us some great input. And our parents last night, our parents, you know, want tutoring. So what can that look like? What can that look like? Our teachers are tired. Let's not always ask them to stay after school and do that work. So let's see who we can bring in to do some of that tutoring that are qualified in that or aligned to can help our students with that learning loss.
That was my next question, will we be able to hire tutors to help with the recovery loss? So my other question is, for the ESER funds, how long do we have the funds for? And I'm a little concerned because if we put certain programs or something in place and then the funds run out, there's no guarantee we're going to get ESER funds again.
Right.
So I'd hate to, you know, step out and do something like that. So do we have a Plan B, or is that what the 40% is for?
What it is for, four summers, three calendar years, but there is a matrix that's tied to a requirement, kind of similar to our board monitoring calendar, where we have to every six months come out, come back, and we have to show whatever we put in place is making an impact on student learning. So I think that's a really good for us to hold ourselves accountable. Put it in place, is it working? If it is working, do we continue it or even enhance it? If it's not working, let's not keep doing it for three years. Let's take that money and move it to somewhere else. So we do have that fear of sustainability. So when we're having those conversations about the proposal, this is really going to be an opportunity for us as a Fort Worth ISD family, that if something has worked over that two, three-year period, that four-summer period, if we want to keep it, what hasn't worked? And let's be innovative and be change agents and maybe not keep something in place that we've always had. And let's put this other and enhance it and widen it.
Like, those are all the questions or the comments from the board. Thank you, staff, and thank you, Dr. Scribner. We are now up to consent agenda items. Item number six, as board president, I'm making the following statement in accordance with the board policy BBFA Local. This is a reminder that all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements you may have are matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. Are there any questions or comments concerning agenda item from my colleagues? And I ask that you please use the screen as well to speak or ask questions. Trustee Jackson.
Thank you, President Ramos. Have a quick question on consent agenda items B5, approved purchase of furniture fixtures and equipment for the 4,200 Lubbock and 2,224 Lancaster warehouses. Do we own both of those buildings?
We actually, we do own one, and one is a lease. Our Lubbock warehouse is the one that we do own as a district, and we lease Lancaster. On the Lancaster warehouse, we need to do some renovations due to the department we're putting in there, make sure the temperature control. It's also, we'll be holding our ADQ testing. There are certain pallets that we need to for not only safety of our staff, but just being able to utilize that warehouse in and out with our tractor trailers and all of our testing materials.
Great. Thank you, and I want to thank you for placing the Rinlo on East Lancaster because that's kind of a dilapidated area, net block, and that's improving that area. So thank you to Fort Worth ISD.
Next, we have trustee Endar.
Sorry, I have an honorary microphone. On the B8, which is the allocating TRE funding for a wireless network, I'm really excited about this. And it's been a long time coming, and I know it's been an enormous amount of work to make it happen. Is the city helping in any way with this, or is this all Fort Worth ISD?
We would love for our chief technology officer, Mr. Shears.
And before Marlon jumps in, yes, absolutely, this is an opportunity for us to complement what the city of Fort Worth is doing. They really have invested in what's called a fluid mesh of Wi-Fi network, building on light poles and expanding on city buildings. They're going broad, and we're going deep. So our connection, and Marlon certainly can add more specificity, is to identify targeted household, bring in our own towers. We started this work many, many months ago, actually. We started this work many, many months ago, actually, in focus on our most needed, our areas in the most need, Morningside, Eastern Hills, Rosemont, Stop 6, that'll hit 25% of our student population, and that will be completed by the first day of school, followed by the remaining households and several of the zip codes that we've shared with the board before. But I can just rattle them off here very quickly, 76102, 103, 104, 105, 76115, 119, and 164. And if the board approves those, the next set of purchases tonight, we'll be able to begin that implementation and provide the board with, with periodic milestone reports. And Marlon, if you can augment that answer, I'd appreciate it.
You did so well, I'll try my best. And so as Superintendent Dr. Scribner said, our goal is to reach inside the homes and provide the students with the necessary bandwidth to do their homework, whether there's multiple students in the home or a single student in the home, they can access the Wi-Fi signal at any point inside of their house. And that will supplement the city's community-based Wi-Fi as we are focused more on home-based, inside-the-home connectivity.
Thank you very much. My last question isn't really a question, it's more of a comment for letter M. It is furniture fixtures and equipment for Eastern Hills High School. Again, on my visits to campuses this week, one of the principals specifically mentioned how much the kids appreciate, high school students appreciate having chairs that they fit in. And if we want kids in our classrooms, we got to give them a place to sit where they're comfortable. So I'm glad to see this on the agenda, and I'm happy to support that. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jackson?
Thank you, President Ramos. Back to Trustee Dar's question on B8 for the private wireless network. With regard to the towers, who will own the towers? And if we now are with a certain company with regard to our wireless service, et cetera, if we were to move to another company, how would that work?
That's a great question, Trustee Jackson. So in the side of this project, we will own the towers. We will be able to monetize those if we would like. So if AT&amp;T or any other commercial service wanted to come in and add to those towers, we would be able to if we wanted to do so. If we wanted to one day move from one vendor, we own the equipment, we own the towers, we own the modems that are inside the home, we would be able to pick up another management service to help us manage that network if we just so chose to.
And I have a question with regard to when will this become obsolete? And because if you lease, then, then you have an option there, and I'm sure you guys looked at both, but just for the public, for clarification.
Technology in general, I couldn't give you a finite answer to that, but technology in general has around a 10-year span before new technologies come on. CBRS, which is the technology we're using, has been around with the Navy for some time. It's not going to go anywhere, but technologies improve. And so CBRS is the baby child to 5G. This equipment will allow us to move into the 5G world, and that will be around for a subsequent period of time. And then you'll see new phones and new equipment come out with other technologies, and we'll have to upgrade our endpoints, just like we upgrade any other technology.
Great, thank you. I'm glad you drove those 30 miles west. Thank you for being here, that was a great answer. I have a question, Dr. Scribner, how are we going to roll out implementation to the community? How will the parents learn about this? Because this is huge for us. It's very exciting, but how are we going to make sure everybody knows?
Right, well, pending board approval tonight, we don't want to get too far out in front of the parade. With, with board approval tonight, we certainly have a plan this week, in fact, to call on our, on our partners in the press so that we can celebrate this first phase, the first 25%. And you're absolutely right, in Fort Worth, about half of our student population speak the language other than English at home. So we really want to make sure that we're, we're communicating with our entire school community, and we will certainly do that. I will be doing interviews in English and Spanish on the, on the English and Spanish channels, as well as radio. And our communications team will, will strategically reach out to our, to our parent group. And I think also our principals and our parent liaisons will be key in this, specifically in these, in these targeted populations.
Thank you.
Trustee Brookins?
Trustee Jackson actually stole one of my questions. But the other question I had was, is there a term with the service, with the towers? And also, are we in, in a local agreement with the county or with the city? Or how does our partnership, what does that look like?
Marlon, could you explain the, the two-step process with the, the initial 60-foot, and then ultimately with the FAA approval, the 100-foot?
Yes. So upon board approval tonight, we will engage our partner, and we will engage in an expedite process that allows us to put these towers on a trailer to meet the need, and then we'll go out and get the right permits from the city to use their light poles if we need to, to put the 100-foot pole, if we need to extend out, you know, as far out into the community as we need to go. But our main goal right now is to get students their home connectivity as fast as possible because not just the beginning of school, but you know, if we can get it up in six weeks, right, I'm not saying we can, that's going to allow us then to have summer school connectivity, right? And so my job, and you know, I told the superintendent that we're going to hit August 16, but my job is to make sure that we beat that and we provide students the access as soon as possible. And so to answer your question, we're going to do the 60-foot pole on the trailer. We'll move and get that, get the permits for 100-foot pole. And I don't know if that answered your, your whole piece, but that's our goal, and that's what, what I've been tasked to do.
Okay. I'll just ask one brief question in relation to B8. I noticed a letter from our colleagues to the east. Is that still the current vendor that they're using, the current partner?
It is. I spoke with my colleague just before this meeting, and they're still working with the vendor in question.
Okay, thank you. Looks like those are all the questions or comments from the board in reference to consent agenda. We will now recess and reconvene in a, in a board conference room for executive session. The time is 7:45 PM. The date is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. We will now recess and reconvene. Executive session is authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code under sections 551.071, 072, 074, and 076.
Career success starts here at Fort Worth ISD's early learning program and pre-K classes. Join our team of teaching professionals who, like you, are highly qualified to give our youngest students their best start to a lifetime of learning.
I love my job because as a teacher, I have the power to make a change in the lives of my students.
Good job!
Our pre-K teachers and teacher assistants provide strong foundations for our youngest learners as they start their educational journey here in Fort Worth ISD.
And while growing young learners, you'll expand and accelerate your career through Fort Worth ISD's professional development opportunities.
When I first started teaching, I didn't start off in Texas, and there was not a lot of support when I came here. My classroom was full of supplies. I got a lot of training that I needed to start and have a successful year.
Come help us shake their future and yours.
Because success starts here!
Meet our principals and early learning professionals in person at a special pre-K teacher and teacher assistant recruitment event. That's Thursday, June 3rd, at the Fort Worth ISD Teaching and Learning Center.
I'd like to welcome you to our virtual 2021 District Teacher of the Year Awards. So we're happy that you're all here, and I am going to, I mean, I'd like to introduce you to our board president, Sinto Ramos Jr., and he will officially begin our event today. Sinto?
Thank you, Peg. Welcome, saludos, my friends, amigos y amigas, to our virtual District Teacher of the Year Award Celebration. Congratulations to our 10 finalists for this impressive honor. Two will be chosen, one from elementary and one from secondary. Today's celebration includes some special guests, always supportive of teaching excellence. There are board of directors, which include Toby Jackson, Quentin, better known as Q. Phillips, Anaya Luevanos, Daphne Brookins, Karen CJ Evans, and Dar Norman Robbins and Ashley Pass. All representatives from our outstanding title sponsor, also representatives, my apologies, from our outstanding title sponsor, Central Market, Director of Public Affairs, Mabry Jackson, Austin Jord- Jorday, sorry, Jordy, General Manager of the Fort Worth Central Market location, a place that my family and I visit quite often. And so thank you, Central Market, for making these awards so special each year. We look forward to hearing from you coming up in this program. The teachers are very proud of you. Over the last week, we put you all over social media and videos featuring each of you. We'll also create a video of today's big announcement. We are living in challenging times, and you have all risen to the challenges. You were first, you know, elected by your peers as Campus Teachers of the Year because of your resilience and because you are student-centered, innovative leaders on your campuses. You tested yourselves yet again, and you applied for District Teacher of the Year. You made it to the final phase, a round of rigorous panel interviews, which has now brought you to this moment. Our superintendent, Dr. Kent Baderiscribner, has more to say about that, and we'll begin the recognitions. Dr. Scribner, hand it over to you, my friend.
Thank you very much, President Ramos, and thank you to all of our trustees who are joining us this evening, as well as our very generous partners. Hello, this is the Fort Worth ISD District Teacher of the Year finalist celebration. We're excited to bring you together today to recognize you for your hard work and commitment to our students as we approach the end of a school year that is a year like no other in our history. As President Ramos indicated, your journey to this recognition began months ago when you were named your school's campus teacher of the year. In all, we recognize 134 campus teachers of the year, and 10 of you stood out as leaders among leaders, the best of the best in Fort Worth ISD, our teacher leaders. It's not just your fellow teachers and the selection committee who feel this way. As President Ramos and I introduce each one of you, please listen to what your principals and assistant principals have to say. As we say your name, please wave so everyone can find you on the screen, and I'll begin outlining the descriptions based on comments made by your principals and assistant principals. I'll begin with our elementary district teachers of the year, the finalists, and the finalists are, first, Mary McKinney of Joe Kelly School. Principal Amelia McKillen shares this, "Mary McKinney is an amazing asset to our school community. She delivers the highest quality of instruction to both virtual and in-person students. She serves as our tech liaison and keeps this campus moving with her technology tips and tricks. She maintains a monthly newsletter, offers technology trainings, and a help desk for troubleshooting while rocking it as an awesome teacher. She lends a helping hand anywhere, anytime, even for less glamorous tasks such as mopping floors when the gym flooded one time, and she also has been a bright spot to all of us at Joe Kelly, and we're so proud of her accomplishments." Our next finalist, Bridget Lopez of Western Hills Primary. Please wave, Bridget. Assistant Principal Shamira Moore says, "Mrs. Lopez displays such leadership on campus. She has a spirit of teamwork and hard work. She's a fabulous educator and takes pride in giving our students her best each day. We love and appreciate her for all she has brought to Western Hills Primary." Congratulations. Our next elementary teacher of the year, Anthony Smith Wright of Eastern Hills Elementary. Principal Whitney Scott says, "Mr. Smith is truly a gift. Our work is rewarding and challenging with him by our side. In this work, our students and community deserve someone who is passionate, persistent, resilient, and willing to grow. He takes ownership and is sincerely caring about every single individual in the school community. When you find that person, you know you've found a true gift, and Mr. Smith is that gift. Our school is a better place because of him." She is incredibly thankful that he's part of the Eastern Hills Elementary family. Our next teacher is Olivia Alalde of Alice Contreras Elementary. Principal Amelia Cortez Rangel shares this, "Mrs. Olivia Alalde is special to our students because she strives to meet their academic and social emotional needs. She finds innovative ways to teach her students and takes into consideration their learning styles. She is a caring and enthusiastic person who is always looking for ways to support not only her students but also our entire school community." Angela Ferguson of Lowry Road Elementary is our next teacher of the year. Principal Deborah Williamson notes that Miss Angela Ferguson "serves the Lowry Road community with dedication and commitment. She willingly takes on leadership responsibilities inside and outside of her classroom to enhance opportunities for all students on her campus. We are truly blessed to have her at Lowry Road Elementary." And now, Mr. Ramos, President Ramos, will introduce our secondary district teacher of the year finalists.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. And again, as I introduce you, please wave, let us know where you are, for our secondary district teacher of the year finalists. And they are, and I'll begin with Tenille Charlie Metcalf of Young Women's Leadership Academy. Charlie, waving? All right. Principal Aubrey says, "Miss Metcalf is the definition of an irreplaceable teacher. Her constant desire is to meet, understand, and provide quality instruction to our students at high levels. Her passion and growth mindset are an ingrained part of her, and over the past three years, her dedication to her craft has resulted in her success and that of her students." Next, we have Casey Kerschner of Pasco High School. Principal Troy Langston shares, "Casey is quite literally a leader on our campus. She is a department chairperson, and she teaches our leadership class. She works to help her fellow teachers and works to help understand the importance of our history." And next, we have Ann Denise Anderson of Polytechnic High School. All right, Ann. Assistant Principal Precious Pallard writes, "Mrs. Anderson is the perfect example of an impactful educator who prepares all students for success in college, career, and community leadership. She walks the walk of passion and belief in her students, and then talks about it. I wish Mrs. Anderson could have been my kid's teacher." Next, we have Toby Moser. All right, Toby, of Young Men's Leadership Academy. Principal Rodney Wright White shares this about Mrs. Moser, "She is the epitome of a teacher who ignites a passion for learning in every child. She is intentional in delivering high-quality instruction to each scholar by motivating them through research-based strategies, differentiation, and authentic relationships. Mrs. Moser goes above and beyond the expectations set forth as she constantly finds ways to expose our young men to greatness. She is dynamic, to say the least. We are beyond fortunate to have her leadership on our campus." And finally, we have Vanita, make sure I get this right, Shanthaphone of William Munning Middle School. Principal Kelly Kirkpatrick says, "She is everything you could ask for in a teacher. She is extremely knowledgeable, willing to try new ideas, and develops strong relationships with her students. She is also very reflective and is eager to improve every day. We are so proud to have her at Munning." And so who will be the elementary and secondary teachers of the year? Here to help us with these honors is Mabry Jackson, Director of Public Affairs for HEB Central Market. And I want to say again how much we appreciate Central Market, a strong supporter of public education, an enthusiastic partner of our district, and the annual sponsor for both the Campus Teacher of the Year and District Teacher of the Year programs. Ms. Jackson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, President Ramos. Well, congratulations to all of you. We at Central Market, we're just in awe of your commitment to students and their learning. As you've had to navigate these challenging times, you know, each of you have had to build a teaching environment from the ground up. You were forced to reimagine, you were forced to reengage on what it really means to teach effectively without impacting students' progress. And add to that juggling the mental health of your children, your students, their parents, your colleagues, and your own families, and yourselves. Woo! Y'all have had a busy, busy year. And so our hats are off to all of you and all of your colleagues that are not with us today, but all of our teachers. We just have a real special place in the hearts of all of us here at Central Market in HEB. So we're excited to recognize the 10 teachers who have come to make a difference in students' lives, and we're going to have one elementary district teacher of the year and one secondary teacher of the year. Each of those winners will receive $5,000 in cash, not gift cards. You get to spend it how you want. And then the eight remaining finalists will receive $1,500. And so, Dr. Scribner, it's time for our first announcement.
Thank you very much, Mabry. I appreciate that. Now it's time to announce the elementary district teacher of the year. The Fort Worth ISD elementary district teacher of the year is Anthony Smith Wright of Eastern Hills Elementary School. Congratulations, Anthony. Would you like to say a few words?
First, I just want to say, you know, the usual, can everyone hear me? You know? Awesome. Well, I just want to say thank you all so much for recognizing this effort. Like you already said, it's been quite a challenging year. So I'm just super grateful, thankful to be able to recognize my campus, to represent my campus, to receive this honor, and I'm grateful to all the people that have helped me get to this point, my family, my community here at Eastern Hills. So thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. And I love HEB and Central Market.
We love you, too.
Congratulations, Anthony, and we're very, very happy for you and look forward to seeing you here soon in person. And now, Mabry, if you could take it away from the winning secondary announcement.
Yes, so our secondary teacher of the year winner is, let me roll, Vanita Shanthaphone of Munning Middle School. Congratulations, Vanita. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. That was a huge surprise. My principal was actually in the room, too, so she's like jumping up and down. But, oh my goodness, I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers that I've had in the past. They're kind of the reason why I became a teacher. Thank you to my family, my friends, my Munning family, and just, I'm so thankful and grateful to be a teacher and just to be able to share my passion with all of you and everybody, all my students. So thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Scribner, I know you have a special message for our winners.
Thank you very much. Wanted to personally congratulate on behalf of our board of trustees, the entire Fort Worth ISD and our school community, who we know supports teachers more than anything, particularly in this challenging year. Want to congratulate all of our winners, but especially Anthony and Vanita, and along with their eight finalists colleagues. We're proud to recognize you today, and it was no surprise to hear the wonderful comments from your administrators. District Teacher of the Year finalists share special characteristics that make a real difference in the lives of our students. You lead the professional development on your campuses. You're proactive, problem solvers. Teachers are leaders, and you are the best of the best teacher leaders. You share ideas and solutions with your colleagues, inspire innovation in others, and build meaningful relationships with students and their families. You are what our children need right now, knowledgeable, caring role models, and campus leaders who advocate for your students so they can be successful. There's a quote that relates perfectly to teachers, and many of you know this, I wouldn't be surprised if you have it up on your wall, "To the world you may be one person, but to one person you may be the world." Thank you, teachers. Thank you again for your exceptional work, and congratulations, and have a great rest of the school year.
Congratulations to all 10 of you. We're so very proud of all of you. And Barbara Griffith is here, too. She's our senior coordinator. And she came on right after we began. I want to make sure you met her. And I am the Director of Community Partnerships. My coordinator, Judy Ramos, and I helped facilitate this whole program. My coordinator Judy Ramos and I helped facilitate this whole program. And again, I want to thank you so much to our very, very good partner, Central Market, HEB Central Market.
Thank you, Mayberry. Thank you, Board, and congratulations to everyone.
Our pre-K teachers and teacher assistants provide strong foundations for our youngest learners as they start their educational journey here in Fort Worth ISD.
In the morning, when they come in, they do little dance moves because we can't do our handshakes or high fives that we normally would.
She is one of my favorite people.
It's good to be back with the kids and be able to see their face. See their eyes since we can't quite see their smiles. But as we're coming back in person, starting to get to form those relationships. I've just tried to do as much as I can to keep things normal because there are lots of gaps from what they've missed last spring. And just trying to close those gaps.
She lets us do math in fun ways.
I want to make learning fun for them.
She is a fun math teacher.
My job is to prepare them for their future. I try to do lots of real-world applications in my classroom so that they can see, why do I need to know this math? How am I going to use it later on in life?
Helps me when I need it, and she helped me a lot in math and science.
I do love teaching. I am a teacher because my fourth grade teacher inspired me and made me want to be just like her when I grew up. Just seeing the lives that I get to touch and the difference that I get to make. When a kid comes back to me 12 years later, they let me know that I impacted them in kindergarten. That just touched me that 12 years later, she's still thinking about her kindergarten teacher.
Thank you for helping us.
All right, this is what we're going to do. Merle is going to keep.
When people are in situations such as this, that sometimes it pulls them together.
One, two, three. When you work together in collaboration, it's amazing what will turn out.
I encourage them to reflect.
She's more than a teacher.
Think about what is happening and how they can maybe change a lot of those things to a positive.
She's a wonderful teacher. She's very encouraging.
There's great things ahead of them, great things for them to experience.
Doing a good job. I like that.
They all come to class. They enjoy being there. They make the effort.
Probably one of the best artists I've ever had.
They are clinging to something to make them still feel normal.
We're putting something together that's going to be beautiful in the end.
They're very, very concerned with my own personal well-being as I am theirs.
She really cares about everybody.
That's always a win, I think, for any teacher during this time.
I love teaching because I like to inspire.
The hallways are going to look beautiful.
I think the biggest approach to this year is figuring out how to still find success in an environment that looks very different. Starting this year off all virtually was very different and quite a bit of a challenge. But I was still able to, to work with my team, to get to know all of our students really well, to get to know their families, making those connections and getting to know them has been a real victory.
He's like a friend to me.
My source of encouragement comes from being able to overcome. As a naturally introverted person, the students are always pushing me to be better. They're encouraging me to, to break out of my shell.
He moves around and he does talk to everybody.
I truly hope to embody being a champion for all of my students. I want to make sure that I'm providing them the best education they could possibly get so that they're seeing success not only in fifth grade, but in all of their pursuits.
He's a very great teacher.
I really enjoy teaching. It has been so awesome to work for a school, for a district, where we're all going above and beyond to do everything that we can to make sure students are successful. It's been a wonderful opportunity. I'm super excited and super grateful.
And he knows a lot about the earth.
I was very nervous for this school year, but it has turned around. And actually, I've really enjoyed it. I've grown a lot professionally. The district and my department did a great job at getting us prepared because we didn't really even know, even when we were preparing, what that would look like. And we have rolled with it.
My teacher is really good. He's nice. It's a fun class.
The kids have just amazed me. I mean, it's just really, really incredible. And they make my job easy. We have love for each other. We care for each other. We respect each other, and we have so much fun learning. NPE in the gym, it's just an absolute blast.
My teacher is funny.
I have encouraged them through my passion for health and wellness. And I've always said I get my energy that I have from moving around all day long with my students. And they will forever use the things that they're learning in my classroom. I absolutely love teaching. Literally, I'm always thinking about my students. I love them so much. The thing I miss the most, of course, is their beautiful smiles. Teaching brings me so much joy, and I truly believe that my life would be filled with a lot less if it wasn't for teaching. Perfect. Did it go good?
What he does not know.
I love teaching and really at the root of it is my students.
All right, let's go ahead and get started on this.
I have tried to make it as normal as possible.
I know personally, she makes me feel very comfortable.
I unfortunately have to stay in front of the camera so all my virtual kids can see me, but making sure to also make eye contact with my in-person students. I told them from the beginning, I said, I am going to give you guys a lot of grace if you'll give me a lot of grace. All right, guys, we are going to release you from me. Study hard for that test on Friday. It's hard to connect through a screen sometimes. So, I really miss that aspect of just getting to build in-person relationships with them. You know, I'm learning right there with my kids in some of these technology aspects. I think every year I have aha moments when it comes to writing and kids, it just kind of clicks with them.
I think she makes it interesting.
So, this is significant.
She's one of the best teachers. She sort of gives herself to you.
I am hopeful for next year that we can maybe get back to some kind of normalcy because I'm excited to have students back in my classroom.
You can hear me?
It really has been life-changing, thinking about pre-pandemic and thinking about now. But I decided, you know what? It's time to up your game. My students walking into my classroom every day and saying, I'm glad I made it to school today. I want to be in your classroom today. That for me is a victory.
Probably the nicest person that you'll ever meet and an amazing teacher.
I always want to make sure that my students feel that I genuinely care about them. So, listening to them, understanding where they're coming from, the things that they're dealing with. Those are the things that are going to make them feel secure in my classroom.
I do care about her because she's my teacher.
She's like the parent.
I like to think of myself as the bridge. I want to take what these kids bring to the table and make sure that they get to the other side. I tell the students, just like one of the novels that we're reading in our book, we're going to have lots of mountains and valleys, but we learn from those and we get better. Mistakes are proof that you're trying, so no matter what, don't give up. Success is not cookie cutter. You can do it. Teaching is important to me because it gives me a voice. It gives my students a voice. It gives my community a voice. I want to be that voice for everyone. I love what I do. My classroom is my happy place. I feel amazing.
She's nice and pretty hyper.
Hello, Byron. So, COVID actually forced me to really embrace technology. I think it's helped us to make the leap that we needed to make. We were all in the same boat. Nobody knew how it was going to go. And so, you have to engage them in ways that make them want to come to class, whether that be in person or online.
She asks us every morning or at the end of class, how your day been? She's always there for you when you need her.
There is no greater joy. There's nothing greater than watching a kid wanting to learn and being proud of the knowledge that they're gaining. That confident young man who believes in himself, there is no greater encouragement.
We are going to go outside to the glory of nature.
I encourage them by giving them grace, by trying to know what's going on in their life outside of my classroom. I want them to have the ability, the knowledge, and the desire to make good decisions for themselves, for their families, and for our future. I love teaching because it's fun to, I love watching their brains grow. I mean, just like right in front of you.
I like your thinking.
Being a teacher has made me a better person, especially because of the people that I've gotten to meet along the way.
Okay, bye, disclosure.
Bye, guys.
Hello, Byron. So, COVID actually forced me to really embrace technology. I think it's helped us to make the leap that we needed to make. We were all in the same boat. Nobody knew how it was going to go. And so, you have to engage them in ways that make them want to come to class, whether that be in person or online.
She asks us every morning or at the end of class, how your day been? She's always there for you when you need her.
There is no greater joy. There's nothing greater than watching a kid wanting to learn and being proud of the knowledge that they're gaining. That confident young man who believes in himself, there is no greater encouragement.
We are going to go outside to the glory of nature.
I encourage them by giving them grace, by trying to know what's going on in their life outside of my classroom. I want them to have the ability, the knowledge, and the desire to make good decisions for themselves, for their families, and for our future. I love teaching because it's fun to, I love watching their brains grow. I mean, just like right in front of you.
I like your thinking.
Being a teacher has made me a better person, especially because of the people that I've gotten to meet along the way.
Okay, bye, disclosure.
Bye, guys.
She's just a very caring and loving teacher. If we ever need help, she's always there.
Morning, Sebastian. I just love being the person that students and other people can come to when they need help, when they're struggling, or when they want to celebrate something. One of the biggest teaching victories is when students have come up to me and told me, man, that was a hard lesson, but I got it.
She makes it like fun going to school.
I want my students to be lifelong learners, and I want them to enjoy the learning process.
When I'm on virtual, she calls my mom and asks me, do I need any help on anything?
But as more and more students come back in person, I want them to know that I'm there for them.
She goes out of her way to help kids that need help.
Because I was a student who struggled a lot with my language, and I've struggled to find a place in school, I wanted to be the teacher that advocated for all students, no matter what. Learning is possible in all elements, whether that's academic learning or life learning, or just a skill that you just grow to love. I love teaching because I get to work with students who come from all different skill sets. And I get to challenge students because I want to be someone that changes the world for the better. And teaching has allowed me to really do that. And that's where we find our meaning.
Congratulations from Lockheed Martin.
The reason we brought you out here is not to take a picture. We actually called you out here to announce that you have been named the Lockheed Martin Chair for Teaching Excellence in Elementary Math and Science.
Being named a teacher chair is just a award that gives us a recognition in our district, and I'm very proud of it. Today, we're going to practice our inspection. The award to my students, they said they had the best teacher in the school and in the district, so that was pretty exciting. We're going to use our journals. My students are just as adaptive as teachers. They're adapting to different situations, being at home or in person. They're really stepping up to the challenge.
The reason we brought you out here is because we're so happy and so proud to announce that you have been named the Angela DePaulus Chair for Teaching Excellence in Visual Arts.
Being named teaching chair to me means that all the little things, the extra hours that I've put in over the years have been recognized, and that feels good.
The most amazing art teachers in the world teaching Fort Worth ISD.
I agree.
Thank you. You have your standup?
Hey, in the COVID environment, it's taught me that our students really enjoy being in class, and they miss being around their teachers and their friends. To make a square, if you have a rectangular paper, you can fold it like a triangle. I think the top quality a teacher needs to be successful is flexibility because things are always changing.
Here.
Inscriven a sus hijos en línea porque el éxito comienza aquí.
President Ramos, thank you. I have pictures like A in those. The Pasco UIL academics teams had a fantastic showing at District winning Science, Mathematics, Accounting, and Calculated Applications. Pasco also had the second place Debate Team and the second place Computer Science Team. So congratulations to all the Panthers at Pasco.
They also had, that was a picture of the state champion in Chemistry is from Pasco High School. That's pretty amazing. State champion.
You good, trustee? All right. Looks like our last one might be trustee Brookins.
Okay, I'm having complications over here. Okay. I'm trying to get through this without tearing up. This Friday will be the anniversary of my husband's passing. And in lieu of flowers for his going away service, and I want to thank the board for their donations, we were able to raise $500 and set up a scholarship fund for him. And tomorrow at Poly, which was his school, we will be selecting a lucky winner to receive that $500. And I've talked to my family, and this is something that we want to continue. So, like I said, this year was his school, Poly, and next year we're looking at doing something with Odie Wyatt.
Thank you for sharing, trustee Brookins. Congratulations on that. Trustee Phillips.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you for that, trustee Brookins. Double that make it $1,000 on me on that.
Thank you, Board. We are now at the end of our meeting. The time is 9:11 PM, and this meeting is now adjourned. Everyone be safe.[965.88]